Okay, looks like we have board members present. I would like to call to order a public hearing of the Urbana Cunningham Township. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller? Okay, I see.
You're muted, Jared.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Ms. Chinawith?
Present.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams?
Here.
This is a notice of public hearing. A public hearing to approve a proposed property tax increase for the Cunningham Township for 2020 will be held on December 14th, 2020 at 6:30 PM virtually at the City of Urbana Council Chamber's 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois. Any person desiring to appear at the public hearing and present testimony to the taxing district may contact Phyllis D. Clark, Town Clerk, 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois, 61801, at 2173842366. The corporate and special purpose property taxes extended or abated for 2019 were $1,227,339.02. The proposed corporate property taxes to be levied for 2020 are $2,300,000. This represents an 87% increase over the previous year. The property taxes extended for debt service and public building commission leases for 2019 were zero. The estimated property taxes to be levied for debt service and public building commission leases for 2020 are zero. This represents a 0% increase over the previous year. The total property taxes extended or abated for 2019 were $1,227,339.02. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2020 are $2,300,000. This represents an 87% increase over the previous year. Next item on the agenda is public input. Does anyone wish to address the Cunningham Township public hearing at this time? I don't see any hands raised among the attendees. Okay, seeing no public input for this hearing, this hearing is adjourned. And we'll move on to the regular meeting of the Cunningham Town Board as soon as the clerk gives us the high sign. I'm ready. Okay. Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Ms. Chinawith?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Next up is minutes, approval of minutes from the previous meeting. That's November 9th, 2020, which has tentative. Are these draft minutes or these? Yeah, they're draft. Okay. And then November 23rd, 2020, which was a special meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Done? Okay. Next item is public participation. Does anyone wish to address the Cunningham Town Board? Okay. I see no hands raised among the attendees. All right, we'll move on to committee to verify bills, Town Fund and General Assistance Fund.
So as you will see, for the Town Fund this month, and I have the totals on page two of my memo, it's the second half of page two. Under the Town Fund, we had $130,304.28 in expenditures. With the General Assistance Fund, we had $99,907.45 in expenditures. There's a total of $230,212.73 in expenditures. You'll see that our General Assistance Participants have remained pretty steady. We're 136 down from 139. We had seven closed and three open during this time. 56 are homeless, and you can see some of the information related there. Our community work program remains closed in November. We do see a number of people having difficulty applying, qualifying, applying and qualifying for general assistance in part because of how slow the process is with the shutdown gathering pay stubs, IDS information, social security. We do have interns who work directly with applicants, but I think that's part of the reason that we're seeing some of that drop off. And let's see, CURAC funding, because it's related to some of the bills that are going out the door. We are both this month and next month, particularly next month, you'll see a large number of expenditures as we spend down. The CURAC funding, it's about $204,000 in CURAC funding. We've been approved for $91,000 approximately of those dollars, and I've actually asked for additional funding. We do anticipate that we'll be exceeding that piece. So you'll see some of those expenditures, the CURAC expenditures this month in this town bill's detail, and you'll see more next month as well. And we are gearing up rental assistance. We only did two this last month. We did six the month before. I changed the rules on December 1st because of COVID. We really not, there's a lot of people being approved who don't then get payment made because frankly, our assistance amounts are not sufficient to pay down their debts. So after speaking with our rental assistance partners, I've changed that to two months of rental assistance, and I've increased. You can be making up to, your rent can be up to 70% of your income, so you can be extremely rent burdened and still receive rental assistance. And with that, we are moving a lot of rental assistance this month. We really want to do that in advance of the end of a potential end of the eviction moratorium. And I anticipate I'll be bringing several dozen rental assistance items to you next month. So just a heads up on that piece. Happy to answer any questions about the town bills.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I have two questions. My first question is, there is, I believe it's training for Scott Winter. I'm assuming that this is some kind of training that you're doing online, or I don't know if that's Danielle or if that's Wayne. If you could tell me a little bit more about that?
It's Wayne.
I'm sorry, Mary Alice, where you at in the?
It's page seven, it's page seven of the detailed bills. It's IAO course 201 with Scott G. Winter.
So Scott Winter is the vendor, not the, is the vendor. And that paid for three quarters, four course packets for training.
Okay, so was that part of a conference or something? Because right below it on page eight, there's travel for a hotel in Chicago?
No, that was a, that was a separate, that was a separate, that was separate.
So there, okay, so, but there was training in Chicago this past month, it sounds like?
Yes.
I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
My second question had to do with consulting services for Don Owen. If you could give me a little more detail about that?
Yeah, so I employed, I reached out to contract with Don Owen to help me with the CURAC reimbursement process, because I simply don't have enough administrative time. And so if I didn't add capacity to my plate, then essentially, we wouldn't be able to get reimbursements moved quick enough. So I assigned him to research facilities improvements that we need to make under COVID. He made a series of safety recommendations. He made a recommendation for a security system and a locking system. And I'm going to actually be purchasing those either through Effie Moran or David and Harry's Locksmith. And so it was probably the number of hours just specking it out, meeting with the vendors and trying to get that piece done, which I just didn't have capacity to do. So I reached out to his consulting service to do that.
Okay, all right, I have some questions about the rental assistance, but I'll wait for the township report. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jared?
Make a motion to approve the Town Funds and the other, and the General Assistance Fund.
Is there a second?
I'll do that. Dennis.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is reports of officers.
Yes, I've just had a few highlights from my supervisor's memo, which is, goes on for a while. With the, you know, the primary issue, we've been facing this last month. And I've looped the mayor and head of Grants Management, Sheila Dodd, into a lot of the conversation about this. But essentially, we have been chasing our tails with utility shut offs. Many of you had signed a letter in support of ending shut offs, both by Ameren and Illinois American Water. Thanks in large part to that pressure, Ameren agreed to end shut offs two weeks early, which was a great reprieve for us. I did meet with Richard Mark, who is the CEO and President of Ameren, Illinois. Thanks to Carol Ammons, our state rep, who convened that conversation with Scott Bennett and others. Julie Pride was on the call, and we found out that 68 households still remain with their power shut off due to non-payment. Some of those maybe move out, so we're not sure exactly what the situation is. And I asked, how much money are we talking about? And it's about $60,000 in bills for those 68 households. We've been working to see if they could share the addresses of people behind on power with RPC, and they have said they cannot do that due to privacy concerns. So we are now asking if they would mail something, starting with the 68 households, to notify them of how they could get their power turned off, and specifically asking them to reach out to their local townships so that we can support them with whatever case management they need beyond just making a simple phone call, because clearly, that's not enough. And it hasn't been enough with the folks we've been helping. Water shut offs remain a concern. We continue to reconnect water, I would say about twice a week, a family, almost always a family with children. I think only one family has had children. We've helped to reconnect. I think we're at six families at this point. And then anyone who's behind on bills, we, the township is not doing reconnections. We are referring people to Lyheap Salvation Army, the city of Urbana's COVID CDPG program. But once someone is cut off, it's such an emergency situation, as long as they prove that they live in Urbana, and they can show us the disconnection notice. We've been turning those back on. And I have to say, it's 100% from angel donor funds. It's all private donations that have allowed that to happen, which has just been amazing. Most recently, and this just happened this afternoon, but CU Public Health allocated dollars to both townships to help to support for utility payments and rental payments. So that will help as well. We are working with a consortium of agencies. The city of Urbana is at the table, as is the city of Champaign, the townships, RPC, Salvation Army and others. And we are working on a kind of outreach strategies leading up to, so there's a voluntary moratorium, which doesn't seem to be working for the lowest income families who are still getting disconnected. But generally is, is stemming the tide, but we're concerned about that moratorium when it's lifted, there being a slew of utility shut offs. And I know that the city has taken some leadership in supporting sanitary district disconnections, and I appreciate, appreciate that intervention. I think we need to pay very close attention to the utility shut offs. And then I would just add to this that we continue to do significant assistance in light of COVID-19. Most of our work really is kind of in response to that right now. And we do have an emergency housing program for families. We are exclusively working through the school district and crisis nursery, so that you have to basically prove you have children in the Urbana schools or staying in crisis nursery. And you are literally homeless, and we're able to support those families, because otherwise, they have no place to go. So we received a $10,000 angel donor fund grant, private donation to support that program. We also have additional dollars with the new budget. So I'm going to actually, because so many changes have happened, both dollars in and dollars out, I'll be bringing a new budget to you. And I will have that funded in a more stable way through our levy, but I think it's just been fantastic. We've been 100% funded through angel donor funds for that emergency housing program, and it's been very successful. We have had not a single person return to street homelessness. They've either 25% in subsidized housing, about 25% going into market rate housing with either disability checks or earned income, and about 50% into the emergency family shelter, which takes a while to get in. So we've been able to provide that bridge. So that's been very important. We met with USD 116. I'm going to be bringing an MOU. I'm working on MOUs with them and crisis nursery. I'll check with legal to see if those need to go through Town Board. But essentially, we are going to have a relationship of referral through those agencies. I'm really excited about that piece. And we have just been going really strongly on the housing advocacy piece. We did have our ESG COVID dollars. Finally, the grant has been signed. You authorized my signature on that, but we had not actually received the grant as of our last meeting. So you pre-authorized my signature. I was able to sign it the day I got it, and we are launching that with the first of the year. That is a called Bridge to Home. It is a program that will house literally homeless individuals who are staying in shelters or on the street. They will, we will rehouse and provide up to a year of tenant-based rent assistance and intensive case management services. So we're really excited about that program. It's a new program. It fills an important gap in our community. We don't have a lot of rapid rehousing programs. We expect two COVID grants for that, and then we are going to be applying for the standard ESG funding in the next year. So the goal is to really make that a stable and ongoing program to poco a poco. We're going to, you know, house the homeless in Urbana, and we will get there. So I'm very excited about that piece. And then I'll last just say that our Bucket Brigade has been amazing. We are having an event December 20th on the south side of Lincoln Square by the Common Ground Food Co-op. We will have coats, hats, mittens and warm weather gear for free. Families and individuals can come. They will let us know how many are in their family, and they can basically shop for that number of coats. And the last time we did this, this is in partnership with the Channing Murray Foundation. We had 200 coats, 100 pair of mittens, 100 pair of socks. It was all gone in 45 minutes. So we've had to really up our game. So we have many more hundreds of coats. And I just want to do a special shout out to Mike Ingram, because he's gathered over half of the coats that we're going to be distributing. He's personally gathered and brought to our office. So we're going to have hundreds of coats. And, and then we are purchasing gloves and hats and, and socks, because we just simply haven't had enough donations. We've had a lot of donations, but we want to make sure that nobody leaves empty-handed. So we are using some of the cure funding to actually purchase some of the warm weather gear, and we'll be distributing that on the 20th. Stay tuned, I'll let you know how many people show up. And we just continue to have a very high volume. Luckily, I've been able to staff up using cure dollars and grants dollars, and so we are able to continue to answer the phone when people call. And, you know, we're getting back to folks and moving applications through. So I feel like we've become very efficient in serving the public. We're doing, you know, we're going to, last year, we served about 1,000 residents in Urbana. And this year, once I'm done counting the numbers, it's going to be closer to 3,000 to 4,000 residents. So I'm very proud of our team.
Any questions for Danielle? Mary Alice?
Danielle, as I was looking through the supervisor men, sorry, memo, you talked about making some changes to the rental assistance program. And, and previously, I, if I remember correctly, the rental assistance program was supposed to kind of bridge that short amount of time in which somebody got an eviction notice to bring them up to current, right? Current balance so that they could stay in their housing. So two questions. The first one is, I believe all those payments are directly made to the landlords, right? To, to bring them up to?
That's correct. Yep, we make a payment to the landlord after they have shown through a ledger from the landlord. It's a verified landlord. They have to show that they are down to the payment amount that I have approved. And at this point, for eviction prevention, it's two months of what is on their lease. And for move-in, it's deposit plus first month's rent. So the cap of assistance, instead of it being a flat $600, we've actually moved it to be being two months or a deposit of first months. And that's consistent with some changes made at RPC as well. So we're kind of shifting with our partners around that model.
Okay, and then they also have to have some kind of evidence that they can keep up with their rent, right? They have to have some kind of income coming in that would allow them to stay current with their rent.
Correct. For a standard rental assistance program, you have to show that you have income in the last 30 days, such that your rent at this point is no more than 50, excuse me, 70% of your, of your income. So it used to be you were capped at 50%. We've increased that to 70% because we're seeing so many people on unemployment. And so we're trying to be flexible, just as we are with people on disability. We've always allowed up to 70% with folks on fixed incomes like disability, and we've basically shifted that for everyone under COVID. That seems to be working pretty well. It's not a great situation, but I think it's a stopgap measure to get us through during this time.
Okay, but it does sound like it's an expansion of the program to pay security deposit and the first month's rent, because before, people are already in their housing, right?
No, it's always been, it's always been, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's always been a move in for the homeless or eviction prevention.
All right.
So it is, it's always been up to $600 for either. And by homeless, you can, for this program, you can be literally homeless, or you can be a family who has doubled up with, with someone. So if you are not on the lease and you have children, we consider you, it's McKinney-Vento definition act homeless. Where can, you're considered homeless, and you, we can help you move into your own place, as long as you show that sufficient income. That's always been the case, that hasn't changed. It's just the dollar amount that has changed, and that, that gives us the, well, it does a couple of things. Actually means for people who are subsidized, they're getting less of a support from us, because maybe they're subsidized and they only have to pay $100 deposit and $200 for their first month's rent. Then they get 300. Whereas if you're a family and your rent is $1,000, then you would get, and your, your deposit is $1,000, you get 2,000. So we really felt like it was fairer, and going forward, I'd like to stick with this kind of parameter, that it really is, you know, two months of rent means different for different sized households with different subsidy situations. And I think this is a more fair or a fairer way of going forward, is just to provide those two months of whatever is on your bill.
Okay. And then last but not least, if we go down to the housing advocacy, you had mentioned that you were assisting 76 households to apply for subsidized housing and seven housing options this fiscal year. So that says to me that there were seven housing opportunities, not that we moved seven people into housing, because it's a blind.
Yeah, the second bullet point, so far, we have been successful with 14 households. Yeah, moving into seven opportunities, and an opportunity might be a location like Steer Place or Washington, or it might be an oppor, a time-bound opportunity like the waitlist. You know, actually getting folks on the waitlist for Bristol Place, or, you know, applying for homestead apartments. So I just, I kind of wanted to let folks know the parameters of how many opportunities. Sometimes that number is lower, smaller than it should be.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that was.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Bill?
Yeah, on the, in the additional assistance, emergency assistance, where you say you had 10 households helped in November, three families with children, and nine for the fiscal year with the average hotel stay of 39 days, is that right?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay.
Check, move in, move out, and then I have an average calculation.
Okay, I didn't realize people had to stay in hotels that long.
Oh, that's pretty standard. So the standard for emergency shelters, 30 to 45 days is pretty standard. So domestic violence shelter, you can stay for 30 days with an extension of 45 days. For emergency shelter, you can stay for 30 days with an extension of 45 days. So it is pretty standard. We do have a monthly rate with our hotel partner where we don't pay taxes and we pay a flat monthly rate. So it ends up being honestly about comparable to, it's, it's cheaper than a furnished, you know, all services apartment. It's, it's pretty comparable to a, to an empty apartment. So I feel like the, you know, the rate has been pretty good for us to stay, for folks to stay for that month.
Yeah, I think what concerns me is just the lack of kitchen facilities, so they're kind of reliant on takeout or delivery or, I don't know.
So, and I should, I should mention that everyone who stays in our emergency shelter program, basically, we do an emergency food delivery through our Bucket Brigade, usually the day or two after they move in. And we actually have packs of ready-made foods that are microwaveable, ready to go in that situation. We also provide laundry soap and things for the tokens, basically, for laundry facilities, so that people don't have to go off-site. Those are two of the inconveniences of a hotel stay. It is nice to have, what, what's, what's nice about it is it's basically staffed through the hotel situation. It's not case managed, we provide that, but it is staffed 24/7.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis, did you have a question?
Yeah, one of the items that you mentioned here, the disability advocacy, you indicate that while waiting for disability payments, two individuals passed away this last month. And does that mean that they were waiting and waiting, but never did receive their disability help?
It's the trap, you know, there are many tragedies in 2020, and I think one of the tragedies that is most deeply felt in our office is the four, the five participants who basically in the last six months, it was, it's all post-COVID, have died while waiting for disability payments. All of them have been homeless. It's the largest number of deaths we've had in such a short period of time. These are our friends and neighbors and people we work really closely with, and so it's very difficult on our team. But yes, we did have somebody who was actually the first person I met when I came in as township supervisor, and she was waiting disability payments then, and that was almost four years ago. And she had not received that disability payment and passed away about four weeks ago. So we, you know, my response to that is, we do have a SOAR advocate that I brought on, who's funded out of those reimbursements, and we are really upping our game. The other thing we've done is we've reached out to several community partners, and I will share their names when I, when I'm able, you know, when they've committed. But what we're trying to do is have several community partners agree to and apply to the mental health board for funding for SOAR advocates. The SOAR advocates are the advocates who help people, especially the most vulnerable, such as the homeless, apply for disability. We, I really would like to make it a goal in our community. Right now, we have two SOAR-trained advocates, one in my office and one in Rosecrans, and that is it for the whole community. And I would really like to see five to six within the next year. So I'm actually meeting with mental health board and the, and several agencies that are interested in cultivating. So I'm actually meeting with mental health board and the and several agencies that are interested in cultivating this so that we could really expand the capacity of our ability to case manage and move these. So I'm, I, you know, I guess I'm trying to put the energy of that tragedy into that initiative.
Yeah. What what is the cause for the delay? I mean, years of delay? What is it that there is just not very, they don't, they're not, are they not meeting the required requirements? Or are they, is there just like limited funds and we have, there's a waiting list?
The the very short version of the story is imagine that you have a cognitive issue and you have to navigate probably the most complicated system that you could possibly imagine. And there is nobody, whether they're a case manager or an attorney, who is willing to help you. So there is not a single attorney in town, and I have attempted to find them, correct me if I'm wrong, who will help someone apply for social security disability. They will help you appeal, but not apply. And I've met with attorneys in their offices to try to figure out why this is. I don't quite understand it. So your application is so critical, because it's the groundwork for any appeal. As Fred and any attorney is listening knows, you want to make sure your initial case is solid, right? And then the appeal, you have a leg to stand on. But people are submitting their own applications. And they have no support in doing this, with the exception of our office and Kathy Finley at Rosecrans, who are, you know, Kathy's an amazing human being, but she's only one. So I really think, Dennis, that's it. We're trying to solve that problem by helping people in their application process to basically make sure all of the pieces that they need to apply appropriately are submitted. And without that, it is like threading a camel through the eye of a needle.
Sad thing to hear. Thank you for sharing it. Maybe it'll change.
We're working on it.
Sharice?
Danielle, it does it seem like it's gotten worse with the with the pandemic as far, as far as people applying for their social security disability and will the social security administration offices in Champaign, because I know that's where they're located? Do they, do they have anybody that that will help people with their applications there?
Yeah, so they won't help people with their applications. You call, you know, you can apply online. So they ask you, excuse me, you can apply over the phone. So you have an appointment where they ask you questions and you have to answer it. But a lot of the questions are very specific. At what day did X happen? When did you experience this? It's not something that you can just do a phone call and have the information. It's like applying for a job off the top of your head, right? It just doesn't make any sense at all. So I I would say that during the pandemic, we have observed more people being confirmed for disability payments. That's a good sign. We have seen it harder to access the social security administration, because they can only do it online. And I would just encourage you, since everyone can set up an ssa.gov account, you, you should try to set up an ssa.gov account and, you know, email me how it goes for you. I have tried myself. I had tried to help other people do it. And if you, you can put all the correct information in and still be locked out for 48 hours. So, but you should try, you should try and see if you can set up an ssa.gov account. I think I would give you maybe a, for a group of people like yourself who are technically savvy, I give you a 60% success rate, which I think is a D in high school.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't mean to depress you on your evening, but it's it's a, it's a sad state of.
Oh, I know, I I know, I I can understand it. I just wanted to know if it, you know, because you said this one lady had been on trying to get her disability, even when you met her four years ago.
Yeah, I would say a lot of our folks wait six to eight years. I'm seeing that. And actually, with this particular woman, she was identified for SOAR advocacy, but it was very hard because of the chaos of her situation to have her, she wasn't making appointments regularly to work on the case. So we were actually trying, trying to do a SOAR based application, SSI application on her behalf. She was one of the people we had identified as the most vulnerable. And actually, all five who died were all people who are marked as the most vulnerable people that we were working with. And we had added additional case management and support to their situations. Because we knew, you know, it's not a, once you get to know people and we have the kind of relationships that we have, we know what their situation is, and we know how vulnerable it is. And, you know, a lot of the folks we've gotten into housing, those numbers, those 17, 14, they are 14 of the most vulnerable that we work with. We prioritize the people that we think are the most likely to experience kind of tragedy as she did. So.
Thank you, Danielle. Can we move on to Wayne? Did you have a report?
Just kind of report that I was not able to successfully set up a ssa.gov account.
Thank you, Wayne. You're part of that 40%. I'm telling you, just try, just go ahead. Everybody who's listening, all you who are going to be on the city council in the future, go ahead and try, I dare you.
Do you have anything to add, Wayne? No? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any? Okay, under new business, the first item is the audit presentation for FY 2021, Clifton Larson Allen.
And I think Hope is, Hope Wheeler is with us from CLA. Hope, thank you for your patience. As we go through the supervisor's memo, CLA has been our provider, I believe, for five years. So this is our last year in a five year contract that we have with CLA to provide audit services. And frankly, as it being the last year, I just want to thank Hope and her team, because I came on with very little transition four years ago. And so there was a lot of work to be done to just kind of put, put everything back together. So the audit team has been really helpful in looking things over and making sure that as we grow our programs, that, you know, we're growing things appropriately. And we've had a, we had a very strong and clean audit this year. So she's going to be presenting to you this evening. And I believe that we sent a PowerPoint presentation to be shown to you. If it's helpful, I could also do it as a share screen, whatever works. There we go. Great. Thanks, Jason.
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. You're a little quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay, let me see if I can fix that. All right. Yes, thank you for having me here tonight to present the results of the June 30, 2020 audit. If you want to skip these slides ahead to page four, please, I'm going to just kind of jump through the table of contents directly to our deliverables from the audit process. This, this summarizes the governance communication, which is a required letter we provide to the governing board to talk about our work with your management team there during the audit process. Some highlights of this letter, there were no new GAZB's new government auditing standards required to be implemented this year. The standard setters were kind of anything that was required, they they postponed. I don't think you had anything of significance affecting you anyway. There were no significant estimates in your financial statements. That's generally true when you're on a modified cash basis of accounting versus a accrual basis. And then we had no difficulties with management and no disagreements with management on the audit group that we worked with there at the township during the audit process. You know, as we've been talking about, it's been a challenging year for everyone. We, we started a little bit later, but we were still able to get through the audit on a timely basis and appreciate Danielle and Darcy and everyone's hard work on helping us through the audit process and providing all the documentation that we needed to complete this. Lastly, in the governance letter, we let you know if we had any audit adjustments in the process. We didn't have uncorrected ones. We didn't pose any adjustments that weren't corrected. There were four adjusting entries. I believe they're attached to that letter. They were not significant or not material. Two adjustments in the town fund and two adjustments in the the general fund. On the next slide, page, just to review some highlights from the financial statements, the crux to our audit is our opinion on the financial statements. And we did issue an unmodified, meaning no modifications to our opinion, or a clean opinion on these financial statements, that these are properly stated in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. Your statement of net position includes all your funds on the modified cash basis. Your total assets at the end of the fiscal year was $2.3 million. And that equals your net position. Since you're on the cash basis, you don't show liabilities. $56,000 of those net position assets are tied up in your capital assets. Then you had 1.3 million, essentially 1.2 million in restricted net position related to general assistance, and then 993,000 of unrestricted net position. The statement of activities then is your change in net position for all funds. It was a decrease this fiscal year of 556,000. Here on the next set of financial statements, we show your, your financial information by fund. So if you used to see the information by fund, like we've just been hearing about, this might be more useful statement for you. It shows the town fund and the general assistant fund, individual revenues and expenses. Both funds did have net expense this fiscal year over revenues. The town fund, 163,000 net loss and the general assistance fund, $383,000 net loss. Now, back in later in the financial statements, you'll see budget to actual reports. And and as you probably remember, I believe these were budgeted this way, so not necessarily unexpected. And when we're going through some of the graphs I have on the next slide, you can change to the next slide, you can see there was also fluctuation with the timing of property taxes. So here, this slide just put together a comparison over a three year period to show you revenues for fiscal year 18, 19, and 20. You can see 1.1 million and 18 down to 903,019, then up again in 2020. Property tax timing, as you remember, at the end of last fiscal year. Obviously, there, these are broken down into your key revenue sources with your main revenue source being in your property taxes there. And you can see the fluctuation based on that fiscal year end, June 30th cutoff. The next slide shows the expenses for each of those three fiscal years too. And you can see it fluctuates up again this fiscal year, along with the revenue increase compared to 2019 and 2018. But you can see here, supervisors broken down on a very high level, but into the supervisor's office, the assessor's office over that three year period, the grants, and then the general assistance with the the planned increase in expenditures to bring down the general assistance and and use, use that funding, use that restricted funding. The next slide shows the net position, which I mentioned, just that did decrease in 2020 as compared to 2019, as you're bringing your net position balance down. Then this last slide I had here is to explain the third report that we issued in the audit process. That's the management letter. Here, we just wanted to share with you anything we ran across as part of the audit process. And we just have two items we're noting here. One is required to disclose that we we assist and we prepare the financial statements. In a perfect world, you would have staff that would prepare the financial statements and we audit them. But as is frankly, the case with most of our clients with small and medium sized governments and nonprofits, we typically do prepare the financial statements. But it's something we're required to share here. Then the second item is the bank reconciliation process you have. I know we had a finding in the past about reviewing bank reconciliations, and you guys did put in place, management team did put in place a bank reconciliation process. That's a good process and it's a documented review, which we think is a very good, very strong internal control. The only thing we add to that this year is just making sure if there are reconciling items on it, really reviewing those and making sure the reconciling items are cleared out on a timely basis or corrected rather than left as a reconciling item. That related to some, a couple of the adjustments that we had during the audit process. But overall, a very, very clean report, especially considering the unusual year everyone had that pulled people in different directions and different working arrangements. So overall, I think it was a very good audit. Very quick run through of it. Does anyone have any questions for me or Danielle, if you want to add anything also, you can do that.
Nothing. Thank you.
Dennis, you had a question?
Yeah. One of your slides, you talked, you showed to us that over the last three years, there's been a, our net position balance has decreased. Does that mean that the reserve funds are less this year than they were a couple of years ago? Is that what I'm watching or seeing? Can you explain that a little bit?
Absolutely. So as during the levy process, you might remember that in that memo, I explained that because of the reduction in levy and the increase in, as you could see, there was a decrease in the supervisor's office expenditures pretty significantly when I came in. But there was a pretty significant increase gradual, you know, stepped up increase in general assistance payments. So essentially, for us to cover the client base and to truly provide rental assistance, which was something this town board wanted even prior to my leadership coming in, we needed to deficit spend. So then the question was, will we continue to deficit spend or will we cut services? And 63% of Urbana voters said, no, we'd like you to stop deficit spending, but also not cut programs. So we're going to approve an increase in your tax levy. So basically, we, we predicted, you know, we've been in a, the lucky part of the position I came into four years ago is that we had a healthy fund balance, even if we didn't have healthy annual revenues. So we've been able to use that fund balance to basically support people, you know, meet our obligation, our state based obligation for general assistance and grow our programs.
So do you think that the fund balance will say, will even out or will it?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, intention essentially is that we stop deficit spending with the, if you approve the levy increase this evening, which is, that's the final step to that piece, then deficit spending would end. And except in, you know, extenuating circumstances like we might, as a, you know, the town board might choose to do a capital expenditure and, you know, build a new building, or we may decide to do a kind of one time allocation or deal with, you know, an unusual event. But I don't, I don't anticipate going forward that we would be paying any kind of general operations or regular assistance by deficit spending. That's the point of increasing the levy.
Okay, thanks a lot, then.
I think Bill Brown had a question.
Yeah, just a couple of minor details. Since you brought up capital spending, I'll start with that one. On page 17, there's, I remember we had in the budget, capital, I think we're going to try to start a capital plan or capital fund of some sort and set aside $150,000. But then it was never spent. So did we just decide not to do that?
So and Hope and I actually just just spoke about kind of the proper way of doing, I said, you know, going forward with this next budget year, what we did is I made it a line item in our budget to set aside. But actually, it really needs to be allocated as a separate fund. And there's different ways to do that. Hope, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that basically you can either authorize me to set aside a certain amount in a capital fund. And we talked about, we don't have to do it as a separate bank account, but that might be the cleanest approach. And we do have a bank account right now that we don't use, that we could use for that purpose. Or you could set aside that fund, you know, rather than authorizing me to set it aside, you could set it aside. So those are the two options. And we just, actually, as we were closing, closing out the audit, I asked Hope for some specific direction on how to set, do that capital improvement fund, because I'm concerned that we don't really have a debt, like a designated savings account outside of the Carl fund, Carl OSF, set aside in case for that tax liability. We really, it's really a proper protocol for us to do a capital improvement set aside. And so it's our intention with this revised budget that we would, we go ahead and do that. And I have some direction from CLA on that. And just for the record, CLA will continue to provide quarter. And just for the record, CLA will continue to provide quarterly accounting services. They actually provide our office with a quarterly cleanup. Outside, it's a separate division than the auditing division, necessarily so. But we're continuing to engage with them, even though we'll be going out for bid for, you know, an audit for next year with a different service.
Okay, thanks. That sounds good. I know the library does something similar too. I think they might have a separate account, I'm not sure. My other question on page 16, right before that, note 11, subsequent events, said that subsequent to year-end, the township entered into a two-year contract for the imagery, the pictometry imagery for $40,000. We just approved that in October, and this ended in June, so.
That's, that's because at the end, so right before they prepare the audit statement, Hope comes in, basically asks, are there any major expenditures in this fiscal year that we're in now that we should be aware of? And so we declare any legal liabilities, any changes in governance, any major expenditures, so that they're, even though they're not in the fiscal year that's covered. I believe, Hope, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's why that shows up.
Amount, we probably could have passed on it, but what are, the accounting standards setters said, we want to go through the date of your audit report. And our report is dated in November, I think, I don't remember the exact date. But so readers of these financial statements know that, say you have 500,000 in cash at June 30, but have you committed to spending 600,000 after the end of the year? We still have to ask questions and look at things through our audit report date. So that's why we have to disclose any subsequent events or commitments or contingencies that occur after the fiscal year-end, if they're of significance.
Okay, thanks.
That one may not necessarily qualify, but it was one we knew about, and so we did include that disclosure.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Hope.
Thank you.
Next item is ordinance T 20-12-003, which is an ordinance levying taxes for all town purposes for the town of Cunningham, Champaign County, Illinois, for the tax year 2020, collectible in 2021. Is there a motion to get this on the table?
I'll move the ordinance to be approved.
And I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion. Okay. Bill?
Just, I know we talked about how you'd estimated the total amount and it will very likely be reduced. If it, when it's reduced, will it come out proportionally equal from both funds, the town fund and the general assistance fund?
Doesn't have to. It's actually the process, and I thank Wayne for schooling me on this process, is that the clerk's office will basically limit the amount that we can levy. They will send to me the limited amount, and they will estimate a division between the two funds on our behalf and say, do you want it broken up this way or some other way? And I almost always, I think I have always said, revised it and basically set the division of funds to be appropriate to what the anticipated need is. So as we told the public, we anticipated that the levy increase would be for assistance. And as you can see in this balance, we've basically added the increased levy to the assistance fund. Now, both sides have increased because, as, you know, we have to kind of anticipate if Carl comes back on the rolls, if we have a significant growth that is recorded at end of year. But what I will do is when the clerk sends this to me, I will, you know, speak with Wayne, and we will set it, sit down and figure out the division. And the goal is to basically allocate those new dollars to the assistance fund. And you should see that in the way that it's levied, as well as the budget that you'll be approving.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is resolution T-2020-12-025R, resolution authorizing the township supervisor to execute a lease agreement with the new Lincoln Square LLC for use of space for the township assessor. Is Wayne speaking to this? Okay.
So basically, what this is, is with the growth in the supervisor's office, we started to, we started to exceed what the space at the current township building could have. And so Danielle and I talked about different options. And we decided to go out and look for space to lease. This space, basically, it equates out to $850 a month paid upfront. And the reason it's paid upfront is because it's quite a bit of a discount that we're getting from the previous rent of approximately $1,000. And then we would have to pay the utilities over $50 a month. But hopefully, there wouldn't be much expense with that, so. That's it.
Okay, is there a motion to get this on the floor? Bill?
I'll move approval of resolution number T 2020-12-025R, resolution authorizing the township supervisor to execute a lease agreement with the new Lincoln Square.
Okay, I'll second that.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? Will the clerk, Mary Alice?
Wayne, I was just hoping that you could clarify for the public. Your plan is to move the whole assessor's office over to Lincoln Square, is that correct?
That's the plan.
And when would that move take place roughly?
As soon after the first as possible.
Okay, so I just, I just want the public to know exactly what we're doing here and who's moving where. So the whole office is going to be picked up and moved over to Lincoln Square, and then the supervisor's office will have the entire building.
Yeah. Yeah, my staff expands with the semester starting with two new full-time social work interns. So that would be kind of the hard deadline of it. But basically, people will see a presence for the township in Lincoln Square in January.
We have, I believe we have voice over IP for telephone systems, so your telephone number's staying the same. Everything else is staying the same, except for your physical location.
Right. And so we're in the process of getting utilities set up, specifically internet. It's been a harder process than I expected, but hopefully, we'll have something ready in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Mary Alice. All right, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is resolution T 2020-12-026R, resolution approving and ratifying an appeal of the decision of the Champaign County Board of Review to the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board. Wayne?
So what this is in regards to is a property that appealed to your assessment. I had their assessment at one level. They wanted it lower. They had an appraisal to support their position. We ended up having to get an appraisal to support the assessment. Turns out that the appraisal came in over the assessment. The Board of Review decided to leave the assessment the same. And so this is an appeal of the Board's decision to PTAB. And what this resolution does is ratify and approve the decision to appeal as it's already been sent off as of Friday and received this morning.
Is there a motion to get this on the floor?
Motion to accept the resolution.
Moved by Jared?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bill Colebrook. Further discussion? Mary Alice?
So Wayne, I just want to clarify the public. So we have two, we have two different assessors, assessments, actually three, your original assessment, the property owner's assessment that they had, that they paid for, and then the assessment that we had to pay for to confirm our assessment. So the Board of Appeals heard the case, and which one did they uphold? Did they uphold the existing assessment, or did they uphold the one based on one of the appraisals?
They upheld the existing assessment.
Okay, so, so the reason why we're moving forward is because the assessment that you had to confirm yours was higher than the one that you originally gave them. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, I just want to confirm the order of everything.
Sharice, did you have a question?
Mary Alice covered it for me.
Okay. Any further comment? Dennis?
Was the new assessment significantly higher than the previous one? Is it why we're taking this further, or is it almost a negligible improvement?
So I just want to get the terminology correct. I did the assessment, the assessment for this property is approximately $1,888,000. Did some rounding there, but approximately $1,880,000. The property owner had an appraisal from January 1 of 2019 for one point, approximately 1.6 million. We, to defend the assessment, I got an appraisal done, and that appraisal came out to approximately $2,015,000. I see. All right.
Any other questions or comments?
Did I answer your question fully, Dennis?
Yeah, you know, it's $200,000 higher almost, so. Must be a large property.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is resolution number T 2020-12-027R, resolution authorizing the Cunningham Township Supervisor to sign a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for health insurance coverage.
This is our annual health insurance coverage. We have gone with Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO for a number of years and served the needs of our staff well. We also have the FSA account, which you actually approved the renewal of last month. So essentially, we are meeting with our broker tomorrow morning to finalize. We will most likely renew the plan that we currently have. In addition, we'll allow for several other plans that, under the gold level, to be selected. And we're looking at providing incentives in case those are selected. So essentially, this allows us to renew our health insurance plan for next year.
Is there a motion to get this item on the table, or before the board?
I'll make the motion to put resolution number T 2020-12-027R with, for approval.
Second?
I'll second.
By Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Brown. Further discussion? Bill?
It was hard for me to tell from the chart if there would be any significant increases in costs or changes in coverage. Do you anticipate anything?
So we'll keep the, we'll keep the current plan. So in terms of coverage, there isn't a significant, you know, sometimes your plan disappears. In this case, it did not, though it was good. There is a, an overall cost increase for two reasons. One is we have additional employees that have coverage. So if you work 30 hours or more, you are covered under our insurance plan. And the second is that there is an annual increase that comes with health insurance. And I forget, Wayne, maybe remind me what the increase was for the plan that we're in. Was it?
8%.
8% increase.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is item resolution number 2020-12-028R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign a grant agreement with Urbana Neighborhood Connections for $30,000.
So as you recall, this is the last of the Consolidated Social Service Fund proposed grants that the committee had suggested to you be funded by the township. And the only, you know, we've essentially, most of the groups that we funded from township were food-related. In this case, this was an in-person service provider for youth services. And so we were awaiting from them a response about how their services had changed under COVID. And I received that response. I included it in the documentation. And so we're, and I checked in with the jury to ask if they had any concerns moving forward. People said that they did not, and so we're ready to confirm that grant for them.
Is there a motion to get this before the board? Bill Brown?
I'll move approval of resolution number T 2020-12-028R, resolution authorizing supervisor to sign a grant agreement with Urbana Neighborhood Connections.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, they do good work. I'll say yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item, well, second to the last item on the agenda is resolution number T 2020-12-029R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an intergovernmental agreement for services of the Urbana Free Library.
Okay, last thing on the agenda, and very briefly, but this is very exciting. So you may recall last month was library signup card, signup for your library card month. The issue for a lot of our participants is if you cannot provide proof of Urbana residency, you cannot get a library card according to Illinois state law. So I've been requesting for some time, some options, so that when we have verified that somebody is homeless in Urbana, that they would be able to access a library card and library services. Celestioate, our director, has been, you know, extremely collaborative. We've been looking at all available options. And we were able to really kind of model what we're doing after what the City of Champaign Library is doing with See You at Home. So essentially, what we'll do is we will, we will basically qualify that somebody is homeless in Urbana. They will be able to receive a card. They will not, they, there will not be overdue fees applied in this situation. If there are damaged or lost items, the township would be responsible for the lost and damaged items. And I'm really excited about this, because I think it'll open up that service to our participants. And it's really important that everybody be included in library services, even those without a stable or fixed or safe address to use. Any questions?
Thanks. Is there a motion to get this before the board?
Yeah, I'd like to do that. I'd like to move resolution T 2020-12-029R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an international, intergovernmental agreement for services of the Urbana Free Library.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Definitely, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And last item on the agenda is approval of the 2021 Town Board meeting schedule, which was included in your packet. Is there a motion to get this on the floor?
I'll move that we accept the proposed I'll move that we accept the proposed, um, meeting dates for year, calendar year 2021.
Oh, okay.
But.
Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Colebrook. Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the town board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Urbana Council meeting when the clerk is ready.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Um, and I did call the meeting to order. Could we approve, uh, minutes from the previous meetings from November 9th and November 23rd?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Colebrook. Are there any, uh, corrections? Bill?
Yeah, um, on the minutes of November 9th, um, it's page nine of the PDF. I'm not sure. I think it's page five of the minutes. On the part where we approved the, uh, the grant funding for economic support, said that we approved it. We changed it to net revenue of $5 million, but then we did a, another friendly amendment or changed the motion to 2 million net revenue. And that's what's reflected in the, um, implementation on the website. So I think just the minutes needs to be changed to 2 millions, net revenue of 2 million instead of 5 million.
Did you get that, Phyllis?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Okay, any other corrections? Thanks, Bill. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any. Um, next item on the agenda are public input and presentations. We're going to start with presentations by the four candidates for the vacant Ward Two City Council seat. This is the seat that was previously held by Julie Laut, who, um, resigned the position. So first up, um, is Steve Drake, and each candidate or each applicant has been asked to speak for, uh, maximum three minutes. And we'll put the timer on so everyone can, can keep track. And I believe Steve is
I'm here, yeah.
in the meeting. Okay, hi, Steve. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. Uh, hello, my name is Steve Drake. I am a resident of Ward Two, lived here for 15 years. Before that, uh, I'm originally from California. Uh, I'm a TV producer. I do video production for the Beckman Institute here on, uh, uh, the campus and previously worked at WLL TV, which is the local PBS station here. Uh, before coming to Illinois, we lived in London and New York and New Jersey where I worked on shows for the BBC and Discovery Channel. Uh, the reason I would like to be considered for Ward Two, uh, is that, um, given the recent election and the current state of the political divide in the US, it's clear that more people need to get involved in government, uh, and work to help their local communities. So that's what I'm trying to do here. Uh, my father passed away from COVID back in April, uh, back in Arizona. Uh, so I know the importance of implementing public health requirements during the pandemic, especially, um, since it'll be a few months probably before the vaccine is widely available to the general public here. Uh, we need to have the city council members who appreciate the human cost of the pandemic. Um, I participated in the Citizens Police Academy a few years ago here in town, uh, and gained a real appreciation of how complex policing is. Um, but I understand that we need to work to help the police and, uh, really protect the citizens. There's one to protect and serve, uh, and have a deeper partnership between the police and the community, uh, and improve social justice. Um, one of the interests locally in Ward Two that I have is to try to keep the character of the ward intact, um, to the balance between sustainability and fiscal responsibility and, uh, the overall lived environment. While the city, while the city continues to prosper, uh, Urbana is different than Champaign, and I think that's a good thing. Um, the residents of Urbana, I don't think generally want unchecked development or to live in a city that's indistinguishable from Champaign. Um, so I think the city council needs to strive to move towards, uh, zoning and permitting decisions that advance the city, but also always keep in mind preserving the character of the city and values, uh, that the residents hold foremost in their mind. Uh, like I said, I'm a video producer. One of the most important qualities, uh, requirements in that job is to listen to people. And that's what I'll do from on the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next person to speak is Joseph Edwards.
Hey, everybody. My name is Joe. I am a seven-year resident of Urbana. I came here back in 2014 to do my undergrad. And I loved it so much, I decided to stick around for a PhD. As a student, I also have, am a renter, a designation I share with roughly 60% of other Urbana residents. But, uh, unfortunately, none of the city council currently. And while I really respect the work and the time that it takes to become an established member of this community, I think that it does leave a bit of, um, the voice that people who are, you know, less enfranchised and less established with this, within this community, um, not having representation on the council. Um, as a student at the university, I have, um, served as a senator, uh, where I also served on the Senate Executive Committee, advising the chancellor and the campus at wide on sustainability, uh, sexual assault, um, uh, social justice and campus landscaping issues. I have, um, chaired a, um, the Student Sustainability Committee where I'm responsible for roughly $1.5 million annual budget to, uh, provide for sustainability grants. So sustainability really is at the heart of what I would like to do, um, for Urbana and over the next, you know, five months in this seat. Uh, I understand what these things cost. I understand the actions that need to be made to, um, invest in them. And I think that I have the experience to do that. Um, at the same time, I realize that this, uh, appointment is only for five months and that several of the other folks applying right now have, um, made it clear that they intend to run in April, uh, for that election. This will be Ward Two's first, um, elected new representative in, uh, a little over a decade, I think. And, um, I think it'd be a good idea to let them choose who they want that to be. I, I think that there's a, a certain amount of political influence that could be extended through this appointment, um, in, in the incumbent running in April. And I think that not having incumbent coming in, filling that seat, that elected seat with new blood, um, would really be best for the district. So, um, thanks for having me and I'm hopefully look forward to working with you in one way or another.
Thanks, Joe. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay, my name is Christopher Hansen. Uh, I've lived in Urbana for about, uh, 18 years, if you count my undergrad time here. You guys have, uh, heard from me before, the last time the Ward Two seat was vacant. So rather than, uh, I guess giving you, uh, the same spiel, uh, I thought I'd just tell you a story. So last month I was speaking at one of the city council meetings, as I often do, and I was criticizing someone, as I often do. I don't remember who, but, uh, Bill Brown was chairing the meeting. It was actually a committee of the whole meeting. And, uh, Bill Brown interrupted me and he said, he asked if I could direct my comments toward the council as a whole. And he explained that the, uh, the organizational chart of the, the city has the council and the mayor to top. And so any issues I had with, uh, anyone else should be directed at the mayor and the council. And, uh, I've always found Bill Brown to be a very studious, uh, words person. So I kind of just took his word for it. But, um, last month when I was handing in my election petition to run in the upcoming election for Ward Two, I was in the, kind of the foyer of the city building, handing it over to Wendy Hundley, who was always very polite and helpful. And I happened to see the, uh, organizational chart of City of Urbana up on the wall. And Bill Brown wasn't, wasn't quite right. Um, the city and the mayor, city council and mayor are very near the top of that organizational chart. But at the very top, it says people of Urbana. And I think that might be a fact that's gone missing, um, and a lot of what the council has been doing lately. So, uh, I mean to see that changed. So that's why I'm applying for this seat. And, uh, as you guys know, I'll keep working on it whether I'm on the council or not. Maybe it'd be, uh, smoother if I were on the council. I'm not really sure. We could find out. It's only five months, so, uh, I'll leave it at there. Thank you.
Thank you. And last to speak is Eric Sacks.
Good evening. So I'm Eric Sacks. I've lived in, uh, Ward Two for, uh, over 10 years. Um, I'm a scientist by profession, so I'm a believer in, uh, data for having good conversations and coming to effective solutions. And, uh, we are a community of about 41,000 people, so it's also important, I think, to make sure there's good input and representation, uh, from the community as a whole. And if I were a councilperson, I would seek to, uh, engage with the community and, and, and bring, uh, as many of those views forward as I could. Uh, and this is especially important now as we are developing a new comprehensive plan for the city. And, uh, getting involvement will be, be critical to getting this right. I think some of the major issues facing Urbana are, uh, revitalization of the downtown. I think we have, uh, a great need to, uh, have mixed use and have more people living downtown so that the businesses are well-supported. Uh, and, and working with, uh, those who can make that, that dream come true. At the same time, uh, especially as an issue for Ward Two, but for the city as a whole, I think we need, uh, sustainable development. And by that, I mean development that will, uh, provide benefits for the city for the long term. Now, in Ward Two, for example, we're right on the edge of campus, a, a good chunk of the ward. And, um, we have a historic, uh, neighborhood, uh, beautiful old houses that attract a lot of people to live here, both renters as well as owner occupiers, an important part of our city's revenue base. And, uh, maintaining the integrity, architectural integrity, uh, while allowing for the city to continue to grow or to grow, uh, is an important part of, uh, what we will need to encourage. And that will often come through with, uh, sound and consistent zoning. Other issues facing the city, of course, are things like climate change and, uh, providing for, uh, renewable energy, access to electrification for charging automobiles, getting ahead of the curve on these sorts of things. And of course, social justice is, uh, an important issue throughout the nation right now, and certainly in Urbana it will be so as well. Uh, and so, uh, working with the police to make sure that, uh, uh, you know, the, the values that are, uh, encouraged, upheld by the board are reflected and to, uh, uh, address, uh, the mental health crises, uh, that occur throughout the country and here the same in a, in a more effective and humane, uh, way. So, uh, I'll just, uh, round up by saying I'm happy to work with, uh, the board and hopefully see the city, uh, prosper. Thanks very much.
Next step in this process is that I plan to bring a recommendation for appointment to a special meeting of the Urbana City Council next week. So that'll be at seven o'clock, um, before the regular committee of the whole meeting will be held. And, um, I asked the council to vote on it and, um, then we'll swear the new candidate in virtually immediately after that. I want to thank everyone for applying. We had, we have some very strong candidates. I've interviewed everyone at this point. And, um, I'll be, uh, checking in with city council members later this week to get your thoughts. The applications have also been shared with the city council members. So again, thank you very much to everyone who spoke tonight and, um, we should have a new Ward Two representative by this time next week. I wanted to, uh, under, move on. We wanted to introduce Darius White, who is one of our newest, um, staff members in, working in economic development. Stephanie McMahon, would you like to introduce him? We're not getting audio. Not really, no. How about if we, how about if we ask Darius to introduce himself?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Excellent. Uh, once again, my name is White. Um, I'm joining the city as an economic development coordinator. Uh, it's truly a pleasure to join the city. I look forward to helping our, uh, business community and giving back. Before this, I was with the Urbana Business Association, as well as the Champaign Park District. Uh, me and my family have been residents for Urbana for two and a half years now in this event arena. Just once again, I'm excited to join the team, uh, happy to be a part of the economic development team and just really look forward to giving back to our community.
And I would add, Darius is serving in a leadership capacity in Chancellor Jones', um, special initiative on, uh, racial and social justice in our community. So he's taken that on in addition to his economic development, um, duties. Thank you very much, Darius, and welcome. All right, our next presentation tonight is on the, uh, plans for the comprehensive plan. And this is being presented by Andrea Rudy and Lily Wilcock, who've been leading this up.
I was just gonna do a little intro, if that's okay, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, as the mayor said, Andrea and Lily are gonna give an overview of where they are in the, in the comprehensive plan process. But I want you to understand that, you know, Andrea joined us right around the time that COVID was, um, uh, getting, uh, getting, starting to get a toehold in our community. And, and she has just, um, jumped in with both feet to help our efforts and, as has Lily. But, but Andrea's been the, the real leader of all of our business outreach efforts related to COVID. And as you remember, we've had wave after wave of restrictions put in place, um, for various business types. And we went out time and time again, and Andrea and the team have tried to stay in touch with our business community and, and respond to their questions, adapt to their questions and all of that while juggling all these comp plan efforts. So I just wanted you to understand what an asset Andrea is, Lily is, Darius has also jumped in with both feet. So, you know, we just have a great team right now and really excited to have Andrea and Lily present where they are with the comp plan.
Can you unmute Andrea?
Sorry. Um, thank you for this opportunity to be able to update you on our activities over the past, uh, past few months. Uh, as you know, Lily and I have been dedicated to this and, uh, couldn't be a better, uh, partnership, I think, between Lily and I to have her planning expertise and, uh, my background more on the strategic side in, uh, and, and having the business background. It's just been a great combination and we just can't wait to share some of the things that we're doing or have been doing with you and the exciting things that we have planned. Um, I'm gonna share my presentation here and hopefully that works just fine. Okay, can everybody see that presentation?
It looks good.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Um, so I don't need to, to tell everyone what a comprehensive plan is, but traditionally it's a plan that contains a general vision and goals to guide policy development and resources for the city. Urbana, however, is doing it a little bit differently. Urbana, however, is doing it a little bit differently in that we not only are incorporating the traditional aspects of a comprehensive plan, and you can see some of those here, transportation, land use, housing, et cetera, but we're also infusing many aspects of Urbana life. And that includes our arts and culture scene. So we really want to capture from our our communities that populate Urbana. We want their ideas on what makes Urbana unique and how we can capitalize that and going forward. Everybody's familiar with the roadmap that we may we presented early in this process. The roadmap is is just that. It's a guide, but things are gonna change as we go. Just for instance, with COVID hitting, that certainly made us take a detour a little bit on some of our plans. However, it also gave us the opportunity to look at things differently and how we're gonna outreach during this time. So people are already more accustomed now. They know they can't meet in person on different different things anymore. And so they're receptive to Zoom calls, et cetera. So we're capitalizing on that. And you'll see some of the tools that we have in place that Lily has been diligently working on, our website in particular. And you'll see some of that later in some slides. But the the thing we the intent of the community engagement process, and and as it says here, we really do intend to have this be very extensive to identify the goals and vision for our community. But we want as many, we want to provide the opportunity for all of Urbana's diverse population to have a voice. And to do that is gonna require a lot of different methods of outreach, not just the website, but many hands-on things that are possibly more traditional, even going to door when acceptable, surveys, handing out flyers, working with community groups that can provide us that audience with their constituents so that we're able to reach all these these different populations in Urbana's diverse community. So we've come up with some branding. This was early on in the process. We had a small staff group that interviewed graphic designers. Our graphic designer does come from Urbana, and she works for the University of Illinois. And we came up with the theme called Imagine Urbana. And we really do think that this captures the essence of what we're trying to achieve is that we want people to really use their imagination. And what do you want Urbana to be? What do you want your community to be, where you live, work, play, and study? And so the Imagine Urbana, you see the light bulb, which is indicative of having new ideas and and thoughts. And so this is our branding. And then some of the other things that we've been working on, as you as you already know, we've allocated staff resources. We've also dedicated a staff working group that has been bouncing off ideas, giving input, feedback all along the way. And we have a data group that Lily has has formed as well. And and we can get into that a little bit later as well. The data group is really different in that they're gonna be looking at how to tell the story of the different themes that develop. And we have no preconceived ideas of what this plan is gonna look like. We really intend it to be organic and that the ideas and the themes that will eventually be in our plan bubble up from the feedback that we get from the community. And all during that process, we want it to be as transparent as possible. When you see the website, when we launched that in January, all the feedback that we receive via the website will be visible to everyone. We're not editing out negative comments. That's what we want to hear. We want to hear that kind of feedback. We will, of course, edit out anything that might be not not follow our public input policies as far as derogatory language, things like that. But we want to hear positive and negative feedback, and it will be posted on the website. How do we think that we're gonna be able to reach all these populations? How do we determine the success of that? We're looking at the website, of course, will have a registration field where people can put optional information where they live. They can even put their ward in there, which is information we'd like to gather to know what specific issues impact each ward. But we don't know, you know, it's optional. And so we're really gonna be monitoring the type of feedback we get, knowing what the different populations are in community. And if we don't see that we're getting a big enough percentage, we're gonna have to regroup and find other ways to outreach. And many of those those things will be hands-on. And we'll go into some of these tools. So the staff working group, we talked about the designer. One of the other things that we're gonna do all along the way is have informative videos to really tell people about their community, different aspects of it that maybe they're not as familiar with. So having experts in residence, for instance, maybe a speaker on affordable housing, to know what that really means in our community and what what that entails so that that people can give us feedback on what they think about that and what they think about how that can apply to to our comprehensive plan and our and our vision for the community. So some of these outreach tools, we have everything from, like I said, the website to postcards that we intend to give people to return either via some sort of ballot box that they can drop them in, mail them back to us. We'll also have yard signs that talk about how they can text to us, giving them a texting tool that they can easily provide feedback if they don't have internet access, they don't have access to the web. They don't necessarily have to have a smartphone in order to text. So that'll be another option that we can use that we think that people are really going to be amenable to, especially during during this COVID pandemic that we're all in. So again, identifying voices throughout the community. We've got a list, and I'll show you that in a minute, of some of the groups that we've identified, not only to reach out to specifically, but also to provide us a way to reach their constituents. And we've already started meeting with some of those folks as well. So we're calling those community partners. And for instance, just this past couple of weeks, we met with the Arts and Cultures Arts and Culture Council. We've also met with Champagne County Continuum of Service Providers for the Homeless, which contains a very large representation of agencies and groups that we've now exposed the plan to and are trying to work with them to get involved with the events that they're having. So that's a way to that hopefully we can spur interest as well as trust in the process because we're going through groups that hopefully different populations are familiar with and are already interacting with. We had a great meeting last week with Danielle Chinoweth and some of the programs that she has, where we really feel like we can outreach specifically to to the homeless and hopefully get direct feedback from some of her cohorts. So the list that we've identified, and this list list keeps growing, and we know it's gonna evolve as we go through the plan. These are groups that we've identified that we know we want to get specific feedback from. But there are many, many other groups and subgroups of these groups that that we're outreaching to as well. You see on here that we have youth, for instance. We want to know what our future residents want to see in the community. And we have just signed on an intern that comes from the Excellence Program at Urbana High School. And we hope to be able to use her to do outreach to youth via social media and other ways that we can reach out and get their feedback as well. We also have a the university's urban planning department has dedicated a graduate level course this spring to our plan with the goal of helping us outreach via community engagement methods that they'll come up with. So a different different avenue to be able to outreach to the community. So specifically on our website, we went with a a provider that really specifically has expertise in municipalities. So they understand the different confidentiality aspects of working with the city, that the information that we have and the different planning processes that we go through. So the the group that we went with, one of their features that we specifically liked was called the Ideal Wall. And it's a place where people can go on and post general comments about various topics. And from that, we hope then to get feedback in these various kind of buckets, where whether it's affordable housing or infrastructure, land use, safety, sustainability. So these are topics that we hope will then lead into our themes from this various feedback that we get off of this ideal wall. We'll also have a short survey that will be on the website that's more open-ended, giving us, you know, very, like I said, open-ended comments about our community rather than on specific topics, which would become later, after we get this initial feedback. We can then go back and develop these themes further, publicize those to the public. And then maybe these these individuals will be willing to serve on focus groups and participate in more active feedback on these individual topics that will that will come out of this. Another feature is a interactive map where you can pin places in Urbana and provide us both positive as well as construction, constructional items, ideas that they have for that area. So it might be something on their favorite place where they could post a picture about, maybe it's an art festival that they attended, and this is a place that they really enjoyed. Or it's something that, hey, this is a safety issue in my community or in my neighborhood that I want to address. We'll also have different informative videos. One video I'll go into a little bit later. We've got our first series that we've come out with that will be posted on a YouTube playlist that people can go and learn more about their community. And then they can also receive future communications, how they see fit. So if they would like to really be involved in hands-on focus groups, webinars, et cetera, they can certainly do that. Or if they just want updates on the process along the way, it's whatever they choose. They can be as involved as they want to be. So in talking about the educational videos that we'd like to use, the first one, series that we've already filmed and we're getting ready to post that on the website. I think some of you may have seen the link that was in the packet materials that showed one of those videos, and it was of Julie Pride talking about the Champagne Urbana Public Health District. Well, the other groups, you can see them listed here. So it's every agency that has an impact on our community and also is funded by property taxes from our residents. So we're giving a little background on what those groups do, what their mission is, and what services they provide to our community. So we thought this would be helpful for people to get additional information about our community. So our timeline for this next year, our launch for the website will take place in January. We're getting close to that. We're doing some testing on it to make sure everything's working properly. Our staff steering group is going to be looking at that even tomorrow, getting some experience in navigating that site and hopefully finding any bugs ahead of time. The educational events, those are gonna be ongoing. We're meeting with partners right now that can give us that feedback and those events that we want to get scheduled. So we'll be scheduling events, really that whole first first and second quarter of next year. We hope to have participation in numerous events to for outreach. So joining those community partners and sharing information about the plan, but more importantly, having access to their members so that we can get the feedback that we need to develop the plan and the vision for our community. So as I mentioned, this first phase will get feedback, which will help us identify themes. And then we'll be able to share those with the public to get additional feedback. So all along the way, we want to be transparent. We want to give get feedback as we receive it. We'll be doing various interim reports along the way to provide more information, especially to the Plan Commission and, of course, City Council. And we'll be refining refining that feedback as we get more public input. So we intend to have a preliminary report this fall that will go into more detail, not just the themes, but really more of an executive summary that we'll be able to provide. So that's our background. I know I covered a lot of information. I can't wait to hear the questions that you have and and feedback that you can give us to help us refine this. And if you have specific questions, Lily's here as well. And hopefully between the two of us and Carol as well, we can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Any questions for the team? Mary Alice?
I guess you kind of answered several of my questions that you went through the presentation, so thank you for that. One of my one of my concerns was reaching out to the youth. It's usually challenging when we're not in COVID, and especially now. So I'm really happy to hear that you have an intern. Is that what you called her?
Yes.
That's great. That's fabulous that you have an intern. There's also other, I know, I know personally of some university classes that have looked at projects in Urbana. And I'm gonna send you some of the professors who have who've had projects that have looked at different elements. And I love the idea of the map. I mean, that's one of the things that I was thinking about was how can we visually allow people to kind of just draw on the map what they would like to see? So you guys have done a fabulous job. I really thank you. I'm really looking forward to this process. It's something that's need to be done for a long time. So I'm really happy we're dedicating the resources that are needed for this. So thank you.
Thank you. And we also, on the data side, we've gotten some information. I know, Mary Alice, you, of course, have volunteered to help with some of that data analysis. And also on the Plan Commission, too. The Chair of the Plan Commission, Mr. Fitch, has volunteered his his help as well. And believe me, we will take advantage of any help that we can get. And Lily, just on the data, since we mentioned that, if you could talk a little bit more about the storytelling aspect and when we're gonna be getting into the data stories?
Absolutely. So traditionally, when a comprehensive plan comes around in a community, staff will usually prepare a really extensive kind of report on very broad and general specifics from federal level data. And that's that's really great, but it doesn't really communicate very well or very succinctly a lot of the issues that are very pertinent to the comprehensive plan. They really affect people on so many different levels. There's a lot of hot button issues that we've all seen come to City Council recently that really tie into a new comprehensive plan. So what we're trying to do is collect this initial form of feedback. And from that initial feedback, you know, broad broad feedback, dial it down into what the information that we can provide and trying to rely as much as possible on city level data that we do collect already across the different departments of the city. So we actually have a lot of information. It's not sometimes the easiest or the prettiest information that you could ever, you know, use. But it's something that I think is gonna be a really tell a lot about the story of how we got here and where we want to go and also kind of address some of those issues. Or sometimes you see a lot of misinformation or you see a lot of lot of serious questions being asked of people. And so we're gonna try as staff really hard to delve into those and provide information about Urbana in those issues in a story form, not just a big 300-page report.
So it's digestible. Yeah, good. Any any other questions?
Well, thank you very, oh, Bill.
I just, I mean, it's gonna be really challenging, I think. If first, if everything's gonna be remote still for the next few months, to reach out to like students and parents of students in schools and things. If there are opportunities to like do some actual events, maybe if things start opening up later in the spring to work with the park district and school district and actually get that that demographic, their parents and the kids. I think that's one that we don't really hear from a lot, and especially when everything's electronic. Some of some folks don't have the same access or same willingness to do things online. So I think that's something to kind of focus on, too, is maybe working with co-marketing or co-doing some events with with the park district and school district, who are already involved with that set of people, maybe.
Yeah, I think that's a great point that you bring up, and I'm sorry we didn't elaborate on that further. We are preparing for different events that we hope that are in person. For instance, we have one of our our outreach methods is using a mobile whiteboard. Now, pre-COVID, we could have been there and we could have been writing down ideas or having people write those ideas on the board. We're looking at that a little bit differently, providing maybe Post-it notes that people can write their own and post it when we're out at different places. Maybe we're, you know, downtown, we're outside the library, you know, something visible, trying to do it within COVID guidelines. But yeah, we're we're really trying to think out of the box on how we can still reach people in person. And I know we heard that from our intern too, Lily, when we met with her. Interesting, she said that students still are better one-on-one. And so I think we all think about these groups and social media that they all are part of. But to get information from them, she said, you can't do it as a group. You have to reach out one-on-one with them, even if it's just one-on-one via social media. But she made it, she opened our eyes up and, yeah, you know, everything's different right now, and we have to be adaptable and be willing to listen to other other ways of outreach. So like I said, that that roadmap, we're gonna take a lot of detours along the way. But I think our our So like I said, that, that roadmap, we're going to take a lot of detours along the way, but I think our, our product is going to get us there.
Any other questions? Well, thanks Andrea and Lilly. My goal for this whole process, but large, large speaking is I wanted it to be a about civic education and civic engagement. And that's what makes this process, I think, as valuable as the product because it's going to get people involved. And really, we are developing a vision for the future of the community. So, so all the different ways we reach people is going to have an impact on this product. And as people have, have seen, we use the comp plan to, to guide development, to guide planning, to guide zoning, to evaluate everything that comes, many of the things that come before the City Council. So, so this is a great opportunity to help educate the community, to engage the community and looking very much forward to this process. It's already been extremely helpful to this point. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public input. And we'll go to attendees. First person with the hand up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Good afternoon or evening. Could you put the clock up? I'm going to be a little disorganized. Thank you. Much appreciated for the four minutes. So I wanted to talk to you about Illinois American Water. And I talk about this from personal experience, but also from some observations. I hate them. I hate them a lot. I have to put my water in a separate container with a carbon filter and let it sit for 10, 15 minutes before it's safe to drink. Back when I had a roommate and we didn't know that we needed this filter, there was a change that happened with our water and it was like a flick of the switch. When we started to, as we had done for years prior, drink from the tap, we started to get migraines, both of us. A film basically remained in our teeth for hours. We couldn't even get rid of it by brushing our teeth. We called Illinois American Water and they came, tested the water, said it was fine, and then suggested a filter. And fortunately, at least the cheap Brita filter that we were using seems to be enough. But I bring up that anecdote to convey how I feel about the fact that Illinois American Water is hiding behind gaps in state law to refuse to even disclose disconnect notices to the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District. I double-checked the state statutes and it only required that of electric and gas utilities. It does not require that of water utilities. And when looking in this region and seeing that Springfield has a municipal water supplier, Decatur has a municipal water supplier, Bloomington and Normal have municipal water suppliers. I'm wondering why not us? That's a larger project, might even create some union jobs. The more immediate need is to apply pressure to Illinois American Water, who is still allowed to disconnect people. And the latest conversations that I've had with public officials is that they still are. That said, I know that our working relationship isn't great. I just thought that I'd provide you that information. I also wanted to say thank you for providing the shelter homes for families in the Carl rental units that have been in Ward Three. I know that real estate taxes cannot exactly be extracted from those properties. I think that's a really good use of those properties. I want to suggest that we look at maybe expanding that practice via more inter-unit agreements, whether it's with Carl or with the City of Champaign. The City of Champaign is looking at sort of incremental development plan that's going to allow for a lot more flexibility of what housing can be where, what sort of things can be developed where. But the City of Champaign also owns plots of land. And it may be that which could be a basis for providing more, not just private-public partnership housing for families, but public housing itself. And I say this because the latest data from the American Community Survey's five-year estimate is out. And Urbana's number of vacant housing units increased by roughly 100 in change. Our countywide HUD homeless population is 140. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Minnie Pearson.
Honestly, I was running across my computer and doing some other things and it wasn't me, but I'm listening and thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you, Minnie. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Christopher Hansen again. There are a great number of accumulated issues, mostly in regards to public access to the Urbana government that have not been addressed or not being addressed. For example, all of the FOIA violations that have been very well documented at this point. City just lost a FOIA lawsuit. And that's going to cost the taxpayers. Like to hear the council speak about those issues further. Issues about Open Meetings Act, public speaking times. There's one issue that I hope you guys can clarify right now after I finish speaking, which is when, when you pass these speaking rules, did you intend that members of the public would be able to speak up to four minutes if that's how long the speaker wanted to talk? Because that's not what the city attorney is arguing. City Attorney is telling the Illinois Attorney General that the speaking rules do not state who has the authority to reduce the speaker's time. So that his argument is that at any point, I mean, for example, right now, the mayor could mute me at this instant because the council didn't make clear in their written rules, who has the authority to reduce the speaker's time. I think it's obvious that the council meant that a speaker should be able to speak up to the timeline. But I hope the council can clarify that. Also, the council did not define what a virtual meeting is in Section 2.5, the City Code. It caused some problems at our recent Electoral Board hearing because it wasn't clear. Well, it was clear to me that you should have been following Section 2.4 of the City Code. But I think you guys need to clarify that and what applies to hybrid meetings. I'd also like to know, I sent you guys an article recently where the city administrator had, you know, essentially said the city can threaten or is threatening sanctions upon board members for disclosing information about closed sessions. And my understanding is that is illegal and I made some citations to support that. I can't find anything in the City Code or Illinois State Statute that would allow the city to sanction council members or board members for disclosing anything about closed sessions. So I'm hoping you guys can explain that. It seems like a pretty serious free speech problem. I'll also note that the city hasn't released any official statement on the, on the Aleah Lewis arrest. I mean, there were several meetings and many statements issued, you know, claiming that the city, the police department didn't do anything wrong, but we know that's not the case now. So I'm wondering when there's going to be some official clarification there. And yeah, it just seems like all of these issues just keep accumulating and there's plenty of time for the City Council and Mayor and city staff to speak up, you know, to defend their actions. But when it turns out that, you know, actually misconduct or things weren't done properly or illegally, we just, we just go silent to the public and I just don't, I don't understand it. And it just, it causes people to get frustrated more and more over time. And, and I think it was last week, I tried to make the point that, I think it was Dennis Robert, multiple council members who oh, public input is getting, is getting better now after we had these new rules in place. And I think that's a misreading of the situation. I think what's happening is, is some portion of the public is just completely giving up on the City Council because they, they feel they've brought these problems forward and, and they tried and they tried and they tried and, you know, we're essentially told to go away. And I, I think, I think having, having less public input is probably much worse than having, you know, public input from a bunch of people who are upset. I think that's a bad sign. That means the portion of the public have kind of given up on you. So I think you should reconsider what that actually means. And I do hope you'll clarify some of these issues, especially the public input rules. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. First, I would like to thank Jared Miller for proposing setting aside a time for you guys to respond to the public. It was kind of ironic to hear Phyllis Clark say that public input is the time for it. Having trouble keeping up with the rules? Maybe it's because the rules don't make sense and are contradictory to what is needed to build a good relationship between the government and the public. Next, I thought I had seen rather terrible dishonesty and disregard for policy by the city. But Carol Mitten's latest letter to the Human Relations Commission was really quite remarkable. Have you guys read her letter to the HRC regarding the special hearing, the last hearing? At the November 10th, Special HRC Hearing, it was a unanimous decision by the panel that the city's hiring practices needs to comply with the human rights ordinance with regards to discriminatory hiring practices. The panel also unanimously agreed that based on the current ordinance, the HRC does have jurisdiction over the hiring practices of the city. What's alarming is that Carol Mitten wrote a letter to HRC saying that the city is regarding the outcome of the hearing. And moving forward in the future, the HRC has no jurisdiction to ensure the city follows its own anti-discrimination policies. She also then says that the outcome of hearing is void because of a technicality. So I feel that it's really alarming that the city's leadership can just void an outcome of any hearing if they don't agree with the outcome. How can you guys sit there and say that this kind of leadership is acceptable? What kind of example does this set for the other city employees? Is it surprising that the city is going in the opposite direction of transparency when its leadership is giving such a terrible example? I'm glad that Jared Miller last week brought up critical questions about the proposed one-door program. The two presentations thus far by lieutenants and this have been rather vague and superficial. But it, they are requesting quite a bit of money. So it seems like the first big chunk of money is going to hire by Rosicrans, but we have really not been given much information about the search process, the hiring process. How is it going to be conducted? And considering the incestuous relationships with Urbana Police Department and the City of Urbana hires and the dishonest track record of UPD, I think we need a lot more information regarding this program that, and this program seems to be mostly driven forward by UPD. So I hope you guys continue to ask more questions and actually get concrete examples of and, and concrete steps forward instead of just some vague presentation coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Nixon.
Hello. This is Sarah Nixon, longtime resident of Urbana-Champaign. And I am speaking to the council this evening. First of all, I would like to express gratitude to Jared Miller for his advocacy recently on behalf of the great many community members who are impacted by mental health challenges. I've noted and I think many have noted that Mr. Miller has raised questions and concerns at City Council meetings about the one-door program. And his concerns and questions are quite on target. And we do not seem to be hearing responses that are meaningful and adequate. Reports that we're hearing that have been made to council so far seem very thin on key details. And as Mr. Miller has pointed out, the project structure itself is entirely lacking in community stakeholder voices. So for one thing, let's talk about homophobia, transphobia and Christian fundamentalism. I'd really like to see the City Council meaningfully address the fact that CU at Home is a fundamentalist Christian organization. And we've seen the Urbana Police Department just slip them in CU at Home, slip them in under the dorsal as a fait accompli. Look ma, CU at Home is our service delivery partner. No deliberation, no open call for submissions from competing and more philosophically inclusive and holistic mental health services providers. No vetting process. Instead, we have a handpicked done deal. Here's who we're working with. And so who are we working with? An organization whose mission philosophy is homophobic, transphobic and vilifies any religious or spiritual path that is not biblical fundamentalist. I'm truly concerned that no one but Alderman Miller has addressed this issue. I've raised it during public input during at least one City Council meeting before. And I'd really like to know where the City Council members stand on inclusivity. I'd like to know if you share my concern for religious inclusion and advocacy for the LGBTQ community. We're hearing a lot of rhetoric and lip service from the city about reaching out to our populations, our communities, our marginalized, you know, populations within Urbana. And yet here we have an issue where you're dealing with mental, a community crisis, mental health services provider that is going to be responding to members of the community who are experiencing very vulnerable moments, very vulnerable crises. This provider needs to be 100% secular, not faith, not faith-based. I mean, that should just go without saying. As well, people struggling with mental health concerns are extremely vulnerable mentally. Again, that goes without saying. It's self-evident. And we often see this kind of vulnerability exploited by unscrupulous religious organizations and called to, you know, pursue an agenda to precelotize, convert and, and so on. This is extraordinarily unhelpful for members of the marginalized communities whom I've already listed, who are in need of crisis service intervention. I, I feel sure that if, if actual psychologists and therapists were actually actively involved in planning the one-door project, they would insist on eliminating the Christian mission agenda of CU at Home. What else? People struggling with sexual identity and/or sexual orientation issues are, of course, another population that is disproportionately impacted or can be disproportionately impacted by mental health concerns. I fear that people in these groups will be vulnerable to the revictim, to revictimization should they pass through the threshold of the open door program. Again, biblical fundamentalists condemn much of human sexuality as evil, most particularly.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Okay, Minnie Pearson, your hand is still up. We'll give you one more chance.
I'm so sorry. Just ignore me, please.
Okay, I will. Thank you very much. All right, that seems to do it for public input tonight. We will move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of the standing committees and this will be Bill Colbrook.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee, the whole met last Monday, December 7th. Several items were discussed. The first item on the agenda was the consent agenda. All materials listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the City Council and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion on the by the city council and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Specifically, in the consented agenda is resolution number 2020-12-06R. A resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium. Next up is resolution number 2020-12-065R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization agreement. And lastly, resolution number 2020-12-06R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization agreement. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
I'll second that. Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the regular agenda is ordinance number 2020-12-068. An ordinance ratifying emergency order 20-11. The temporary ban of on-premises indoor consumption of food and beverages to include alcoholic liquor within City of Urbana corporate limits. This was passed on to the council with a recommendation for approval, but it's also pending a change of an expiration date. So before I move for approval, do we want to discuss the expiration date specifically?
Yes, and in the amended order, there, the language changed to read, "This emergency order 2011 shall expire when tier three resurgent mitigation guidelines are suspended or terminated." This order is a bit different than the other orders because it's tied specifically to tier three guidelines and specifically to a, a very specific portion of those guidelines, and that's related to indoor dining and food and beverage consumption, and it was at the request of the Public Health District. So expiration, it will expire when either we move out, when we move out of those tier three mitigation, either up or down, either more restricted or less restricted. There's also a typo. Duration of emergency order, it should read, the underlying portion should read 20-11, not 20-08.
So with those changes, on behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-12-069. An ordinance ratifying emergency order 20-12, authorizing participation in Urbana and Champagne sanitary district COVID-19-related financial assistance program regarding sanitary sewer and stormwater utility bills. Similarly, this was passed on to the full city council with no recommendation, and the note I've got is we need more information.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Sharice. With us tonight is Rick Manor from the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District, and I believe Carol wanted to introduce.
Yes. Rick, Rick is here to answer your questions I had sent on the questions that you had posed last week, and so he's going to start with responses to those, and then if you have any follow-up, he's, he's here to answer those as well. So go ahead, Rick. Thanks for coming.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So I'll start with just a general conversation or discussion first. Please recognize this payment assistance plan that we are adopting at UCSD. Spans four communities, plus we cover unincorporated areas. So we're actually serving five different communities. We have various intergovernmental agreements with yourselves and then also the other government agencies that we work with. And so we have a number of strings attached to what we can do. And so, and so we needed to develop a plan that was amenable to all of you combined. In addition, we try and do our work efficiently. We only bill you 3% of the income that is billed for our administrative fees. We only have three staff members working on this, producing about 1,000 bills a day are being processed through our offices. And so that to provide some degree of limitation on how much we can customize and do unique things with any set of individual bills. Every subtlety and every customizing is another potential source of error, and then once you have one error, it ripples through the system and causes a lot of grief. So to, some of the questions that were specifically asked for. The first was, is there flexibility regarding the maximum 1% or the $50 per household? There was the added comment, some council members were wanting to increase the limits. Regarding the 1% amount that we feel is likely to be something that will last for a few months. And so the intent of this program is that we're partnering with Regional Planning Commission, their LIHEAP program. They will process various applicants forward the appropriate accounts to UCSD for further processing. So we'll have a lot of interaction between ourselves and the Regional Planning Commission on a weekly basis. In addition to that, as we see people partake in the, in the program, we will be communicating with your finance departments in regards to how much is being used up. So I think that 1% number can be examined over time. And if we do find that it is problematic, we can be talking to you about exactly what is possible. But I hope that it lasts the entirety of the program and that it at least lasts several months so that we have a good deal of flexibility. Regarding the $50 per household maximum benefit. First, I'd like to point out that that's your write-offs is $50. UCSD is also talking about a $50 write-off that is in addition to that. And so the amount per household is $100 in the most extreme circumstances. And this one, I will rely on the idea of keeping things consistent amongst all the communities and say that we did intentionally set it at a level that we thought would be amenable to all of the communities. In regards to the ability to go beyond that, I'd say that one thing that is very important is to recognize that this is not an exclusive program. This does not have to be the only program, and in fact, it hasn't been. Because we have not had a program before now, Regional Planning Commission and LIHEAP have solicited grant funding for other opportunities. And there's other assistance programs out there, and all of those are, are and always remain available in addition to this. And so this is not the only solution to wastewater utility billing problems in the city. This is just one of the possible ways that things can be resolved. And so in particular, if Urbana Council sees, in particular, if you see gaps that are significant and important to you, I'd recommend you recognize that this is here in a known quantity. And if you want to expand and fill those gaps, that you are able to do that. And that I'd recommend you consider going that way rather than just talk about increasing this one program as being the sole solution. There was a question about what's an average cost of a bill. Recognize that the bill for our services are what we call our user charge, and the bills for your sewer maintenance charge is, both are based on the water usage. And so it varies up and down depending on how much water is used in a given home. When a typical bill is about $30 for a typical, you know, four-person household or something like that. About of that $30 per month, about half of that comes to UCSD for payment for user charges. And about half is shared with the communities either for maintenance charges, stormwater fees, and then in Urbana's case, your recycling tax. Next question was how many bills are behind? District-wide, about 10%. Our past due any amount? We have seen a sharp uptick recently in the number of people that are past due, and that is concerning because frankly, 10% is tolerable. It's worrisome. Going much higher, it starts to become increasingly worrisome and concerning. Within the city of Urbana itself, there are 636 residents that have any amount past due. Of those roughly a third, 211, are more than 90 days past due. And a good fraction that are in that last category that are at least 90 days past due, a good fraction have not paid since COVID started back in March. And we've just seen their total indebtedness increase incrementally month by month by month. But then the average amount, when you look back at all 636 accounts, the average amount past due is about $63. Next question was, do people have to participate in LIHEAP? And there was a concern about social security number and citizens and non-citizens with, and such. So first, in the general question of partnering with LIHEAP, this is at, at UCSD, I felt very pleased to find that we could partner with the Regional Planning Commission, and they're, they're working on LIHEAP. I've known about LIHEAP for decades because they've been around that long. I think it is a very good, well-established program. In particular, also is well-known already amongst low-income community that there is this option for assistance and recognize that any program that we develop would need a need participants to come to it. And we at UCSD employ exactly zero people in our PR department because we have nobody to do that. Three-quarters of our staff runs the plant, another quarter in the administrative area. And so we're pretty lean. And so we really don't have any mechanism to do a good job on the PR aspect of things. And so we thought partnering with the Regional Planning Commission worked out really well. They have staff that have been doing this for a very long time, and that's also important because there's a lot of subtleties and complexities in terms of privacy and things like that. And they've already been doing this, and they have that down. Whereas if we tried to start up anything brand new, I would have great concerns about how well we could do that as essentially being the first time at bat needing to hit a grand slam. And so I much prefer handing the bat off to somebody who's been doing this for a long time. I did reach out to them and inquire in regards to a citizen requirement, and they said that that does not apply. And that I, I do remember being impressed with their privacy agreements in their contract when we were negotiating with them, our intergovernmental agreement. They originally provided us their contract with their private utility partners, and it had extensive issues in practices in that, that they already do in regards to privacy. Much of those details were cut out from our agreement with Regional Planning Commission because basically the amount of information that we are going to be sharing with regional planning is tiny. They will be doing their standard review of accounts on income verification, but that is what they already do for all of their other LIHEAP programs. With regards to UCSD, they'll be just checking off a box saying, yes, they qualify for LIHEAP assistance. And they'll be checking if there is a past due amount for UCSD bill. Once they check off those two aspects, they will forward that account information to UCSD, and we'll take it from there. And so we won't have any information in regards to privacy that we don't already have in our own billing system, that we need for our own billing system. But in regards to the LIHEAP and the eligibility, our two vats of information are distinct and separate. All that we will be getting is accounts and addresses for us to look at and to assess. And then lastly was, Carol was asking, or there was a question in regards to recycling fee and the logistics of forgiving that. And frankly, I'll have to say, we'll have to get back to you on exactly what to do about that, that I need first to have a better understanding of your preference. And then we'll see what we can do in regards to that. And unfortunately, that's all that I can say right now. In addition to the limitations that I mentioned earlier about government issues and intergovernmental agreements, you know, one more issue, which is our billing software. And so if it's not in the program, I may not be able to do it even if we would like to. And so I, I can't answer that particular question right now fully. We're still working out the logistics ourselves. And with that, I think I've addressed all the questions that you pre-provided, and I'm more than happy to answer any others.
Any questions for Rick? Mary Alice?
Thank you, Rick, for all those details and for coming tonight. I think one of the issues with the citizen question was whether or not somebody needed a social security number to apply for LIHEAP. And there are many international people who don't have a social security number if they're not working, because that's the only reason that they would need one. So are you familiar with that process?
I'm not familiar enough to answer that intelligently. I, I do understand that they work with people across the county and that my expectation is they have probably addressed this adequately because they immediately said, oh, sure, we have no problem with non-citizens. So the extent that a non-citizen wouldn't have a social security number, it seems to me that they should have addressed this in some way. I don't know what it is, but I can look into it a little further if that is insufficient.
Jared?
Oh, hearing some of these answers, it made me realize that I never even asked the question about how exactly does someone apply for this benefit? Is it if they apply for LIHEAP, UCSD gets a notice, but it's the overall LIHEAP application itself, there isn't a separate application that's going to exist just for this relief by, by itself?
Right, that we tried to piggyback on top of the LIHEAP program as much as possible. And so the Regional Planning Commission employee will have a slightly different form that would include. Let me first start with the basic for the applicant. It will seem no different than before. That they will be applying and the income verification, which is the primary criteria they use to confirm eligibility, which is 200% of the poverty limit. If that is met, then there will be one additional question, which is, I guess, two questions. Are you a UCSD customer and do you have a past due bill? And if they do, then they'll, then that particular account and address information will be forwarded to UCSD for further consideration. And at that point in time, that customer won't deal with Regional Planning Commission or LIHEAP anymore for our bill. It will be UCSD will notify, will evaluate the eligibility, apply our rules to what is eligible, and in particular, we're talking about owner-occupied residences. We didn't figure out a good way to apply this to rental units. And so we're, we're not doing that. We're doing it for owner-occupied residences. And if they're eligible, we'll let them know if, how much their past due, how much is written off, and that'll be applied to the next bill. And if they're not eligible, we'll notify them of that as well. And so we'll go from there pretty straightforward.
Jared?
So it sounds like it is in a, like, it's a LIHEAP application, and it is applying for LIHEAP. It's just, if you do it, you'll, you may see a couple of additional questions in the LIHEAP application?
Right, that my understanding is that the way LIHEAP works is they're, they're talking to somebody who's processing the application with them, and they'll just ask those two additional questions. And, you know, on the flip side, if there was somebody who only heard about this, the, being behind on the UCSD bill, presumably they would appreciate. Presumably, they would appreciate the possibility of being evaluated for other utility assistance. I expect it's going to be easily 90% the former where it will be a typical lie heap applicant. Will discover that different from the past, there is the potential for a sewer benefit. In addition to all of the benefits that they had previously. And so my expectation is going to more grow on the lie heap side than it will be from the UCSD side.
And then if they are eligible, once that information forwards on to you, you guys basically automatically apply the benefit? And notify the customer after it's been applied?
Right, we'll figure out the limitations, we'll apply our rules for eligibility. We'll look at that 1% ceiling, we'll confirm the communities are voluntarily involved in this program. And apply our rules and determine the result. In particular, the amount that might be written off, that's possible.
If for whatever reason, a resident was rendered ineligible due to some discrepancy on there? You would also notify them of, of that as well? And how they might be able to, what they might be able to do about that?
Yeah, we work with people all the time in regards to the details of their bills. Let me also advise one other detail of the program that we established. Recognize that if somebody has not paid a bill since March, they would probably be, have a bill greater than $100 that is past due. And so one other aspect of the plan that we have done and already established is a payment plan option. Which people can voluntarily participate in right now, which talks about getting people to fully paid off within a year. If there is still an outstanding balance after the payment assistance write-off has been done. The people will have to, the ratepayer will have to participate in a payment plan to bring it around to full compliance and fully paid off bill. And that's the idea that this is meant to be an assistance plan. It is not meant to just be something where we're writing off debt across the board. Because if we did that, well, frankly, our bills have to be paid. So there, there is an obvious limit as to how much we can just write off across the board. The vast majority of our income comes from user charges. And so completely eliminating user charges or making them voluntary is about as impractical as the city making real estate taxes voluntary. You know, it just, we can't do that. We still rely upon people actually getting a bill and paying for the service that they've used.
Rick, do you, do you know, you gave us a percent of Urbana citizens who are behind of any amount. Do you have a total of all of what, what is behind owned by those citizens right now?
Um, the, I can give you the district-wide numbers off the top of my head because we just had our board meeting a week or two ago. We've had about 400 and now it just ramped up to $560,000 total indebtedness. Any amount past due, and that was spread out amongst, I believe it was 4,000 some residential accounts. And so you can see that it's roughly 100 some dollars per account overall. And again, that, that's about 10% of our accounts. That is closer to 5% of our total in come, yes, 5% of our total income from user charge. Plus or minus, you know, five to 10% max. So as you can imagine, that, that amount is tolerable for a one-year situation. If we were to double or trouble that amount, it starts to become much more difficult to absorb. Because our income situation really is a zero-sum game. If we gain, if we void bills on 10% of the people, the other 90% have essentially 12% rate increase to pay for that. And similarly, if we went to the point of half the people not paying, the other half would have to pay double. In that our, our user charges are the source of our income. And of course, we have to pay our bills to keep things current and keep things running.
So I guess that makes it clear enough that regardless of what that is, the amount owed by Urbana residents would exceed the 1% that we've set aside for this program?
If, if the goal, if the intent was to pay off 100% of everybody's indebtedness, the 1% would not be sufficient.
Even because, even just for.
Because the number of people will not be eligible. And because some people will not get all of their debt written off is why I am pretty certain the 1% will last for several months. If it doesn't last through the whole thing. Again, trying to prognosticate exact participation and how people are going to go in regards to these times of COVID is impossible. And so we do have to sort of adjust on the fly as you guys have done in a number of your programs. And why you have all of these administrative orders is because every month we have a new challenge, right? So we'll start at 1% and we'll see how that works is my commitment to my staff and how I'm looking at this.
So one, one, one thing, sorry to keep going on it, Rick. I'm just, you know, I, I understand and you've explained the limitations, what can be done. Well, I'm glad to hear that it's double, that it's at least $100. Because as you've alluded, one of the things, one of the issues I raised when we, when this was brought up is that I bet that there were a lot of people who've not been able to pay their bills due to job loss or whatever related since the pandemic happens. Is there any chance as this program is being administered, that you guys are going to be able to track? Even without, you know, a bulk tracking Urbana residents, just to seek them out? I'm sure you would do that naturally through some sort of accounting process. But those who fall into that particular hardest hit category of people who haven't, who have bills in excess of $100, I guess, is what I'm getting at. And if you are encountering those folks or applying for lie heap or getting, you know, referred into the program or getting their $100 credit. But they still have something remaining, I would highly encourage, if it's at all possible, that, that those folks are tracked and referred to the Cunningham Township. Because we've implemented a number of programs over there. And I bet Danielle Chanel with our town supervisor would be more than happy to talk to you about how the township might be able to help cover that balance. That's left on those three angel donor funds or a number of the other programs we have available over there. Because those are the people who are in the most trouble and those are the people who need the most help. And I just think it would be, it'd be who wants to be able to help and direct at the very least that hardest hit group towards a little bit more, a little bit more relief.
I will reach out and contact her and confirm what reference we can make. But yes, to the extent that they would be amenable to us referring people to them. We can provide that information to essentially everybody of, hey, if you're having problems with bills, here's a resource to go to. You know, one of the things that I note is that our bill is one of the smaller bills that people may be facing. If they are behind in our bill, they are certainly behind in other more significant and more substantial bills. And so I imagine that type of, the person in that situation is, is looking for any lifelines they can manage to get you. So thanks for that advice and we'll, we'll work on forwarding that information.
Thank you.
Okay, so before you again is the ordinance to the emergency order. The ordinance to ratify the emergency order, which will provide about up to 26, possibly $26,000 in relief. Motion was made by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Sharice. Are we ready to vote? Mary Alice?
I have one more question. Rick, so if somebody is in arrears, what is, what happens? You can't just, you can't shut off service to sewers. So is it, is it a legal issue? What happens if somebody falls so far into arrears?
Well, so pre-COVID, we did have the ability to disconnect water, water connection for our bills. Most times, the water bills were an initial reason why somebody gets their water shut off. And so we, our procedure is slower than theirs. And so usually people get their water shut off for a water bill delinquency before UCSD. But once in a while, there have been people who are delinquent on our bill works. And so pre-COVID, there was the threat of water disconnection. And unfortunately, we need to retain that because again, we can't really make paying our bills voluntary 100%. Because at that point, it ends up becoming a system where the people who volunteer to pay just keep on paying a higher and higher amount. That being said, during COVID, we've recognized that disconnection of water would not be a good thing. Of course, back in March, when the emergency order came through, the water utilities were prevented from doing any disconnections. And so from March through September, there were no disconnections for, for financial reasons. When it became possible via Commerce Commission rules to begin disconnections again for lack of payment of bills. If people did not express a concern about COVID, we chose to maintain the moratorium. Because we really couldn't see where it was going to be very productive. And so right now, we don't have a method for disconnection. And so all that happens is that debt accumulates. We do process a one-time late charge as debt goes into being passed due. And so we do process that charge. But right now, all that happens is it continues to accumulate. We build property owners and so ultimately that can turn into a lien on the property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Ready to vote? Sharice, are we, is this a quick question? We do have a panel to get through.
It just struck me, when, when you say you build a property owners, are you also talking about like apartment owners? And they're, they're the ones that'll be responsible for their tenants or bills and so on and so forth?
Correct, ultimately, it is the property owner, which is the apartment building owner in this case. And perhaps you, you can get my contact information from Carol if, if there are any questions after this. I'm more than happy to answer those two.
Okeydoke.
Well, the clerk, please call the roll. Yes, sorry, actually, Bill is reporting this out. That was the question from the clerk. So yes, this is ordinance number 2020-12-069.
Yeah, I'd already mentioned that, I couldn't hear the clerk.
And we do have a motion in a second.
So on behalf of the committee, I move for approval again.
I'll second.
Well, that was already moved by Bill and seconded by Sharice.
All right. Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts?
You're muted.
Yes, I realize now, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-12-072. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number four omnibus. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
When I talked to Elizabeth, I just wanted to clarify because she was able to clarify the memo. I don't know if people saw that. We're not increasing the expenses by over half a million dollars to the general fund. Well, technically we are, but it's being counteracted by the grants that are coming in. So Elizabeth, was it approximately $6,000, is that right, that we calculated?
The, the decrease in fund balance in the general fund is about $6,200, yes.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted people to be aware, we're not increasing our, we're not increasing our, our balance by half a million dollars or negative half a million dollars. I just thought it was good to make that clarification.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020-12-06R. A resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for race street resurfacing project. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020-12-062R. A resolution approving an emergency solution grants program sub-recipient agreement with CU at home for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. And on behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? Reese?
I just wanted to acknowledge something that Sarah Nixon was saying about the fear of certain people being turned out of the one-door policy based on their orientation and, and identity. Is that an issue that we will be able to deal with going into this contract with them regarding the one-door?
Well, it's an issue you'll be able to discuss next week when they do a presentation. And I also have a list of, of the many, many, many community agencies and organizations who've had input and assistance in planning the program. So did Lori, Lori, did you have further comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that no one's been turned away as far as I know through this, through their homeless provisions. They were selected by the continuum, the countywide continuum of care in order to provide this very necessary service. Many other organizations throughout the, the county are also getting funding through this, through this funding source. So the money is being spread out among many organizations, but nobody gets turned away through this program. The ESG program, just to be clear.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020-12-063R. A resolution approving an emergency solution grants program sub-recipient agreement with Cunningham Township fiscal year 2020 through 2021. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020-12-067R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement, Rose Krantz. Rose Krantz Incorporated, One Door Program Director. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. I did want to follow up on questions that came, a question that came in last week about the extent of the community involvement and input into the development of the program. Lieutenant Sanders provided some information today. It was sent out to the council, but I wanted to share it tonight. The One Door, as you know, has been in the planning stages for several years, but it really started up in earnest back in April of 2019. So over the past 20 months, the, they have received a great deal of input and guidance from a number of community agencies and organizations. The Crisis Intervention Team Steering Committee meets on a regular basis. And they're one of the leaders in the development of this, or input into this program. So agencies represented at the Crisis Intervention Team Steering Committee include CU Races. Races is a program that provides support and services to people affected by sexual trauma. Carl Hospital, Champaign County State's Attorney's Office, Courage Connection Pavilion, Life Links, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, Cunningham Township, Champaign County NAMI, that's the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Prairie Center, CU Autism Network, Veterans Administration, Danville, Salt and Light, Champaign County Mental Health Board. Of course, CU at Home, Rose Krantz, OSF Healthcare, the police departments from Parkland, Champagne, the Champaign County Sheriff's Office, Rantle Police, Urbana Police, and Met Cat. Lieutenant Sanders has also met with representatives from United Way, several Champaign County Board members, Smile Politely Media, Senator Scott Bennett's office. And he's provided formal presentations to the Champaign County Mental Health Board, the Reentry Council, the Community Action Board, the Community Coalition Executive Board, the Coalition of Service Providers to the Homeless, the Urbana Council, and the CU Public Health I Plan Behavioral Work Group. So there's been a very broad spectrum of agencies and organizations involved in the development of this pilot program. And again, I'll remind folks that next week, there will be a, another presentation on the plans for the launch and the representatives from the, the main partnerships. That's Carl, Rose Krantz, CU at Home, and, or City of Urbana will be here next week. Jared? I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just a, a quick follow-up. And I, of course, have seen the email with a list of organizations, but I guess it's, you know, my, my immediate reaction to it was, well, in what way? You know, it doesn't, listing a lot of people you had a phone call with one time or talked to for five minutes or exchanged a couple of emails with, or, you know, you know, I could, I could have considered having been had input on it because I've commented on it in city council meetings. That doesn't necessarily mean I had a substantial input to it. So I'm just curious, I know you've been a part of the process, obviously. To what extents was, are the folks on that list, you know, strong contributors, medium contributors? You know, just honorary contributors because they were involved in a meeting one time? I mean, it didn't really offer a lot of insight into the process.
At the Crisis Intervention Team Steering Committee meets on a regular basis. So they're the ones who have been providing probably the most regular input and guidance. As far as what each individual organization contributed, I, I can't tell you at this point. But it's something that we could, if you'd like more information, I could, we could get that. Or I would say could be provided next week at the presentation.
Sure, it's just, you know, it's one, it's just one thing to make a list of who's out there. And it's an entirely different thing to say what they're involved in, it's actually been, what, what somebody's actually contributed. And I'm really just getting at, you know, there just hasn't been a lot of information that's been, been shared about this. And again, I just don't feel like, you know, I guess a lot of people have been talked to, but you know, I'm just worried about community input and people actually being able to be a part of creating this and not just a bunch of top-tier administrative people and organizations deciding how something like this is going to get administered and done, so.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind, this is a pilot. So in a pilot, you, you launch it and you, you plan for it, you launch it, and then you adapt and learn from it as you go along. So I think there will be opportunity for us to learn from the experience and also for us to continue to, to gather input. And really, until you try it and are on the street and, you know, having it operate every day, that's when you really get the valuable feedback and based on experience that you need. So there will be opportunity all along for input to modify this program and adapt it. And we'll learn from it as we go. Bill Colbrook?
I'm not going to speak for the steering committee, but I can assure you, it's more than just a list. The steering committee, like the mayor said, meets on a regular basis. The, the agencies that have been listed have, had substantive input along the way as the One Door program has been a regular agenda item at the steering committee. So those agencies, in my opinion, represent a wide breadth, you know, across the, the community. It's just not figureheads that meet.
Dennis?
Yeah, the, the memo is kind of instructive to us. If we believe that Rosenkrantz is a valid organization that does good work in our community, which I think you can't help but agree to, the memorandum indicates that Rosenkrantz has agreed to be the partner that will hire and oversee the director of One Door for at least the pilot year. And this program also meets one of the other requests that we've heard often again from the, the community, which is the city proposes to use funds reallocated from the police salary line to pay the initial year cost for the One Door director. We've had a lot of people in this community talk about defunding the police. Well, we're not going to completely defund the police, but we are amenable apparently to shift some of the income that might have been used to hire police services to this service, which is a crisis intervention keystone in the community. So I think I find this to be a suitable pilot program with a lot of potential and I, I do support it.
Any other comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome, thank you.
Reports of special committees? Don't think we have any tonight, reports of officers, Carol?
There were a couple of questions that were posed to me last week that I just wanted to follow up on. So Jared had asked me about filling potholes in advance of winter really setting in. And I talked to Tim from Public Works and our, our crews are out and they are working in as much filling potholes as they can with, with their work routines. And also, we have the pothole patcher that's out, that's a, you know, sort of a self-contained machine that only requires a single operator and, and that's out on a regular basis. And we do have a source of the asphalt emulsion through the winter, so we'll be running that all, all winter long. I also had a question from Dennis about the sidewalk snow removal. So I thought I would very quickly just run through the details of that program. So there's three districts where property owners fronting certain streets in those districts. And I will share my screen and show the maps real quick. This is the university district. If the Public Works Director declares that the sidewalk snow removal ordinance is in effect, then from the time of that declaration, which is usually made when there's two inches or, or more of snow or ice that have accumulated on the sidewalk, that the folks in these areas have 24 hours to remove the snow and ice from, from the sidewalks. So this is the university district and I realized that the map needed to be adjusted. And it now goes up to the south side of university. And we'll be getting a new map for the website that was amended in 2019. This is the South Philo Road area. And then finally, we have the downtown area as well. So just wanted to follow up on that and I'm happy to answer any questions about either of those items or anything else you want to ask me.
Any questions for Carol? Okay, thanks. Little did we know, when we purchased the pothole patcher, would it be the, one of the most COVID-safe Public Works pieces of equipment that we own? Since it's self-contained and one person can do it all. I just had a couple of items I wanted to share with you. Number one, Senator Tammy Duckworth's office has invited mayors in central Illinois to a meeting on Wednesday. She wants to, for 30 minutes, she wants to learn more about the economic impact of COVID on municipalities. We could take about 30 hours to talk about that, but we'll try to get our, our message across. I appreciate that opportunity. Again, that's going to be Wednesday afternoon. We continue to meet with the university on the possibility of expanding the university's saliva testing process to the community. This will be a strategic rollout in the community. It won't be open to every single person in Urbana, but they are trying to identify the most vulnerable populations, people who need it the most, essential workers and that sort of thing. We also learned today, there's a possibility that we can apply for more Cures Act funding that would cover the cost of the test. One of the limitations is that the university can't afford, of course, to provide this test to everyone for free. So we're going to have to come up with a way to pay for $20 for a test for each person twice a week. So hopefully, we can access Cures Act funding. And plans remain, plans are underway, of course, for distribution of the vaccine in the community. And they expect to get the first shipment of vaccine, fairly limited amount this week. And that will go to healthcare workers and then people in long-term care facilities as the first tier. But the vaccine should start arriving very shortly. Okay, and I'll keep you posted on the, it's, it's a lot, a lot in the works this week. Hopefully, we'll have some more news on saliva testing as we go forward. Okay, under new business, we have a staff appointment. Shannon Clark, and this would be for the deputy finance director. And I believe Elizabeth needed to introduce her and then Shannon is here and we'll, we'll get to meet her.
Yeah, there she is. So, so we're very excited to, to welcome Shannon Clark to the city. We, as the mayor noted in her memo, we some minor changes in the org chart in finance when we had some turnover. And so we created a deputy finance director position to make sure that we have appropriate professional staffing and backup and also as part of transition planning. Because sadly, at, at some point, I will retire. And so we were very excited to have such a qualified applicant for this position. Shannon has, is a certified public accountant. She has many years of experience, some of it in government, some in non-for-profit, not-for-profit, and much of it in the private sector. So with that, I'll let her maybe say a few words.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the consideration for this position and for your trust and confidence, Mayor Marlin Elizabeth Carroll, for appointing me to this position. I look forward to working with all of you, with the city's administrative departments. And I believe my past experience at Elizabeth noted and finance experience, working in local government, not-for-profit, and the private sector will help to build upon the already documented success, commitment to growth, and the solid core values of the City of Urbana. I'm very grateful for this opportunity and I'm very excited to become a part of the team.
Thank you and welcome, Shannon. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, you too.
Alrighty, next up is Resolution 2020-12-068R, which is a resolution accepting the Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study.
I'm just going to turn it over to Gabe Lewis, actually, with the RPC. And he's going to just present for a few moments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. Let me pull up. All right, can you see Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study?
Yes.
Excellent. I just want to provide an update from when I was here last in early October. I talked about most of the plan and we do have nine chapters. I'm just going to talk about what's in this, these final two sections with public involvement implementation.
Gabe, Gabe, I'm very sorry to interrupt you. We needed to vote on that appointment and I was so excited.
That's all right.
I was so excited to have Shannon on board, I completely forgot to call for the vote. So I need a motion for approval.
I move to approve Shannon Clark as deputy finance director.
I'll second it.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Bill. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Again, I sincerely apologize to Shannon for not taking that vote. Okay, Gabe, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Um, all right, let me go. Okay, so just as a reminder, this study area is 2.4 miles long and we're looking all the way to Lincoln Avenue. We divided the study into four sections. And we, in the October public comment period, presented five alternatives for folks to vote on during the month-long period. And we advertised that it was hosted on our website. People were able to provide comments through email or the Google form or mail. And we were happy to get 35 responses. So 32 people provided comments on the comment form. And then we also heard from three property owners in the study area and two of them just had some concerns about the study, but we did talk about that. Nothing is necessarily happening right now. This is just a, a study that we wanted to make them aware of. So out of the 32 people that submitted comment forms, most voted for alternative one or three. And between, with, based on that and all of our existing conditions analysis, that is what we went with for the final alternative. So we basically merged these, section one, that is Lincoln Avenue to Broadway. We are proposing to extend this trail on either the north or south side of the railroad, depending on land availability. And then sections two through four would be on the south side of the railroad. And here you can just see, we've included some renderings that were done by landscape architecture students at the U of I. And it shows what a rail with trail would look like with either a fence separation that you can see in the top picture or plant or boxes. So this is looking west towards Carl Hospital. And this is looking east towards Race Street and Leo Park. This would be going towards the Boneyard Creek Crossing. And then this is even further east towards the Station Theater, where we do have some limitation with space. Two other comments or categories, we, we included information on in the report and I wanted to let, let you know about is we talk about the recent and ongoing work that's happening to continue implementing the Kickapoo Rail Trail. One is work on the 2018 East Urbana Study, which includes a grant application. We helped the city submit for Baker's Lane, which is on the east side of Weaver Park to develop a trail. There's been coordination with the Norfolk Southern Railroad and legislature, legislators and continues to be. I want to note that an expansion of the KRT is I want to note that an expansion of the KRT is a priority of this mayor and council. And so we're happy to provide this study to, that this helps fulfill that goal. And then we acknowledge that the city, the Park District, and the Forest Preserve, the three major partners in the study, will have to continue working with the active rail line users, which is DART, Ammosaco, and the railroad. And then we also mentioned that there are committees working on this. There's a regional KRT committee. There's a Friends of the KRT group that has formed this year. And then there's ongoing construction and efforts to keep building the trail. So the photo you see is the new section in Oakwood in Vermillion County that opened this year. And then next summer, the section in Kickapoo State Park over the bridge is expected to open. So very exciting to see this continue. And finally, we we categorize these next steps after the study into five groups, five items. One is fundraising and land acquisition. And we did perform a very initial cost estimate for building this trail, which would be $2 million. And so that's why there need to be grants and a lot of, you know, fundraising efforts, private funding, what have you. We do list some sources where that can be tapped. And again, the three agencies involved would be the ones that should try to lead this effort. Engineering and environmental surveys also will need to be done. Phase construction, this all isn't going to happen at once, but we're recommending that section one from Lincoln to Broadway or Lincoln to Vine gets the top priority. Addressing the Vine Street Railroad Bridge, since that's going to have to be addressed by the railroad at some point anyway. And then developing trailheads where people can access the trail. And this map shows 12 locations we've identified that trailheads could be placed. So the Urbana Park District Board approved or accepted the findings last week, and we're coming to you tonight with the same request. And the Forest Preserve Board will consider that on Thursday and will be submitting the document to IBA by the end of the month. So that's my update, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Gabe? Oh, Bill?
I'll just go move approval, move, I'll move approval of ordinance number 2020-12-068R, Resolution Accepting the Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study.
There is a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Counsel discussion?
Okay. I would.
Dennis?
As usual, the Regional Planning Commission has made an extremely thorough and intriguing report. So kudos to you guys. It's a trail that is going to assist mobility across the, but across the community. And I'm hoping that attention can also go to other possible trail connections in the future.
Bill Brown and then Sharice?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank RPC and Gabe for bringing people together to get this, get this accomplished. And I think you did a good job, and it'll be form a good basis for applying for grants in the future.
Sharice?
Um, yeah, I I wanted to ask Gabe with the the plan that with the the trail going on the north side of university. I guess my question, main question is, is that, is that railroad ever used anymore? I guess I you, I live so closely to railroad tracks that I actually hear, you know, when I was in LA, I used to hear airplanes. I hear trains all the time back home. So is, would that create an issue for the trail having to cross tracks at all?
Well, to answer your question, yes, the railroad is currently being used by DART and Ammosaco. But it is very low frequency, so it's about twice a week because once a week for each company. And what we proposed is that the trail would only cross at an existing street crossing. So at Broadway Avenue, so you wouldn't have to, you know, you would have a trail that would come up to the street and then Broadway would have that, you know, the flashing lights or the arms or whatever so that people couldn't cross if there was a train there. But there is guidance from IDOT that they they can, there can be a trail next to an active railroad, just as long as you have enough separation, and since we proposed in the plan.
Okeydoke.
Any other counsel comments? I just would also like to thank RPC for taking the lead on this study. They applied for the grant from the state and and received it. I also want to thank Carl Foundation Hospital again for providing the $25,000 match that was required. The city did not have those funds, and Carl stepped up and did that. This is a project that's a long-term project. It's not going to be built next year. These rail trails take years to develop, but studies, the feasibility study is the first step. We have it, and this is a huge first step. And the project wouldn't go anywhere without it. So so we're grateful to RPC's leadership and Gabe's hard work and that of his team and along with our partners, Park District, Forest Preserve District, et cetera. So so we're looking forward to the next phase. And this long term, this would just be a game changer in in going through downtown Urbana. So thank you, and with that, I'll call for a vote.
Ms. Wu?
Yeah.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is ordinance number 2020-12-073, which is an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 21, 2020 and ending June 1, 2021. And if it's okay, I'll speak to the last three ordinances all as a group because they're kind of a package here. So so you may remember back in mid-November, we we approved the estimated tax levy. And at that time, I gave you a bunch of slides that explained the process and also talked about what we were going to levy. So now the time has come to make that final. And to do that, you need to approve actually three ordinances. So the first is the ordinance that actually levies the taxes for 2020, which we will receive in calendar year 2021. The second ordinance is an ordinance that would abate the levy in order to maintain our current tax rate of $134.99. And that's necessary because when we levy taxes, we do not have the final assessed valuation. So we can't make an exact calculation. So we shoot a little bit high and then we cap it off and bring it back down. And then the third is an ordinance that abates debt service payments for the 2012 and 2014 general obligation bonds. So the reason we use general obligation bonds in that case is because you tend to obtain a better ta, a better interest rate because they're backed by the city's cities taxing authority. But in fact, we pay that debt service from the TIFT2 and local motor fuel tax funds. And so the the bond ordinance, bond or bond ordinances that were adopted back in 2012 and 2014 require the county clerk to levy those taxes unless we abate them. So all three of these ordinances work together to give you the tax levy that we discussed in mid-November. Any questions for Elizabeth?
Okay, I have a motion for ordinance number 2020-12-073.
Sure, I'll do that. I move that we adopt ordinance 12-2012-073 and ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021.
Who is the second?
Bill Brown.
Bill Brown, okay, discussion. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2020-12-074. This is an ordinance directing the Champagne County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the General Corporate Fund for the tax year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Is there a discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last up is ordinance number 2020-12-075, an ordinance directing the Champagne County Clerk to abate a portion of the 2020 tax levy related to general obligation bonds, series 2012, and general obligation bond, series 2014.
I'll move their approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Counsel discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the city council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and we'll see you next week.
Hi, everybody.